Of our Mother of Mercy Catholic Church. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand. And I'm gonna ask at this time if everyone will please silence your cellphones. Pastor, thank you.
We pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. As we gather here today, dear Lord, to deliberate as a city council, to share our thoughts and ideas for the growth and development of this beautiful city. We ask that you, Lord, will make us truly instrument of your peace. Please, Lord, enable us to radiate your love in our community. Grant us the grace to always sow your divine love in our community. We pray that the divine virtues of faith, hope, joy, and light may be rekindled among us. Dear Lord, dispel the spirit of doubt, despair, darkness, and sadness that is creeping and affecting the growth and development of our community. Oh, Divine Master, grant that we may always seek to serve you in the way we love and serve one another. Help us to always know that it is in giving that we receive, in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying to the evils of selfishness and lack of faith that we are born to eternal life. Hear and answer our prayers for our community today. Let your holy name bring supreme again at every sphere of our community. All these we ask through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Please join us in our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Ebby Woye. And I would like to say that pastor is the pastor of our very own Angie Thomas. Thank you for being here today.
I'm sorry, and also Councilmember Duryo, thank you. Mayor Protem Duryo, thank you. So we have today one proclamation and one presentation. And I will start with the presentation.
Mayor, I hate to cut you off, but can we have roll call?
I'm sorry, we need roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
May I have the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Muton?
Present.
Mayor Protem Duryo?
Here.
Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Felschah?
Present.
Councilmember Samuel?
Present.
And Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I saw Ms. Rogers walk in, and I was ready to get started with this proclamation. So we do have one proclamation today, and the proclamation is the Gift of Life Prostate Cancer Awareness. And I will read this proclamation. Whereas September 2022 is National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men aside from skin cancer, and about one in eight men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer during their lifetime. Whereas Texas is the medically uninsured capital of the United States with more than 4.3 million Texans without coverage. Whereas in 2022, it is estimated that 17,850 men in Texas will be diagnosed with prostate cancer, and approximately 2,260 will die from this disease. Whereas Gift of Life, in collaboration with its medical partners, make available to men free healthcare services including prostate-specific PSA screenings, primary care, HIV, and hepatitis C tests, along with onsite physicians who review outcomes and negative men to care for in their testing. Whereas the Gift of Life will host two significant Saturdays, regional screening events on September the 10th at the Industry Safety Training Council Conference Center in Beaumont, and September 17th at the Orange Baptist outpatient lobby. Whereas since 2,000, more than 10,700 Southeast Texas men have received Gift of Life free prostate cancer screening, helping to extend the lives of 77 men who were diagnosed with cancer and who were provided access to diagnostic evaluation and treatments. Now therefore, I, Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and Tuesday, August 30th, 2022, as the Gift of Life Prostate Cancer Awareness Day in Beaumont, and urge all men in our community to pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, has herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed on this day, August 30th, 2022. Signed, Mayor Robin Muton. And receiving this proclamation are Regina Rogers, founder and chair, and Norma Sampson, executive director of Gift of Life, and any other members, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that, and wanted to say how grateful we are to be here and to have your opportunity to share our message with you. And so our Men Against Cancer will also give you our choir with a little early holiday treat. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present before the city council. Oh, I'm so sorry, I just needed you to come this way and say, excuse me. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
How you doing? Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for y'all being here again, baby. Thank you. We appre-- oh, oh, that would be nice.
You got it?
That's okay. Well, we certainly appreciate you allowing us to be here. As always, it's such an important forum for Gift of Life, our Men Against Cancer, our prostate cancer survivors, and certainly for our founder and chair, one of our executive committee members, Dora Nysby, to be with us, as well as special ambassador of our cause, Chief Earl White, who's a prostate cancer survivor. And everyone here has been instrumental in sharing our lifesaving messages throughout Southeast Texas. And so we feel so blessed and honored to be here, and importantly, to be able to have our men screenings once again in Southeast Texas. This is the first year where we've really changed up our services so that we can ensure looking at COVID and all of the CDC recommendations. So this year, we're scheduling a Jefferson County screening site at the ISTC, the conference center, as you mentioned, Mayor, and that's to provide men throughout Jefferson County to come, take advantage of the services, have a really large, wonderful facility where we can have social distancing. And also, what's been important is this time, we have scheduled appointments. So it's truly an empowering, robust healthcare experience because the men have an opportunity, as you noted in the proclamation, to get these free lifesaving screenings, some of which are nearly a $400 lab screenings. And more remarkable, too, they're onsite physicians from oncology, urology, internal medicine that are there to go over their point of care and to talk about what their next steps are to become compliant. And importantly, for those that have other life-threatening diseases that are really part of what this message is about, cardiovascular, diabetes, and other diseases, for them to get navigated into essential care, whether that's through our community partners with the federal qualified clinics or their PCP. So we are so, we also feel so honored that we've been able to have a medical director that's joined our team who's with us today, Dr. Gwendolyn Lavalley. And it's such a unique situation that not only do the men have an opportunity to be there to talk to a physician, but Dr. Lavalley, as part of our collaborative efforts, calls each gentleman who receives a screening and gives that personalized review of their tests, answers their questions, and importantly, has early detection, navigates them out of the emergency room and higher price point of care to ensure that they get that track of care that we all know that's so vital, that you get the follow-up if you get abnormal outcomes. So we're asking everyone with your help and everyone here today to please encourage men to register for our screening, September the 10th. It's a Saturday. We purposely scheduled it so men who maybe are going to have a short time at work or they're not at work that day, to join us, take advantage of these free lifesaving screenings. We have, as always, lunch and giveaways and make it a wonderful compassionate experience. We're providing transportation collaboratively throughout the churches and through other partners in our initiative. And we have available screening schedules that are still available for men in Southeast Texas. So we ask everyone that's here today, please call us, go online, register for these lifesaving services, and allow us to help save your life. And if we could take just a few minutes, I'd love to ask for Dora Nysby, who's our officer. I know who you know so well, as well as our Men Against Cancer that are with us, if they could also share just a couple of remarks.
Sure.
Dora?
Thank you, Norma. My words are gonna be words of gratitude. We are so grateful to the city council for your support through all these years that we have been here. We can count on the city council. And you, we know how much it means to be able to help someone when they are really in serious need. And when you receive that message from the doctor, it's serious. It's so important for our region that when the Gift of Life was originally started by Regina Rogers, we focused on breast cancer. But we care as much about our men as we do about our women. And so now we also focusing on the men and their cancer, and your cancer. So we just want to thank you. Beaumont and Jefferson County are very, very blessed entities. We don't know of other cities that have this kind of services that we give to our people, and it's free. So we care that much about the citizens of this entity, the City of Beaumont and the County of Jefferson, that we give these free services. And without your support, your continued support, as you have been through the years, we could not do it. So we just want to thank you for being behind us and supporting us all these years. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Nysby.
Good evening. I'm Mac English. I'm a 17-year survivor. I want to thank the mayor, council for inviting us in the proclamation today. But I want to caution especially Afro-American men, which prostate cancer affects basically Afro-Americans, Hispanics, and then Caucasian. But I encourage you to get checked with your PSA and the digital, both. But let me tell you a story. I was diagnosed 17 years ago. Yeah, I am. The PSA didn't pick mine, so what all men hate. All men hate that, and y'all know what I'm talking about. The digital, that's what found mine. And the physician told me, "Ms. English, don't get alarmed. You're gonna be all right." And with God, all things are possible.
Amen.
He took 12 biopsies. And guess what? All 12 were bad. So I had nothing going for me but God. So they taking it out, but I want to caution the men. They got things out there now, terminology better than what you have, so don't take a chance. The early detection is key. The number one, early detection. We catch it, and you'll be in good shape. And y'all heard the dates, the 10th to 17th. Please be advised, take due notice. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. And I'm not gonna say a word except thanks. And to say the reason we started this is because my uncle had passed away from prostate cancer 20 years ago. And he had not been told that he needed annual checkups. And when we did this, prostate cancer was sort of in the closet. You didn't talk about it. It was hidden away. People didn't talk about this disease, nor breast cancer. But breast cancer had become more acceptable, prostate cancer was not. So we raised the awareness level initially and then really concentrated on the others served. I don't have to tell you all how many uninsured there are in Southeast Texas. And by the way, I do not like it when I hear it said, "Oh, well, you know, they're just getting a handout." That is not true. Many of these people have good jobs. They work 30 hours or less, and they don't have benefits. Others have lost their jobs due to COVID and other unusual circumstances. So we are here with compassion, understanding, and love. We appreciate you. I had to go drag our firefighter, who was putting out fires earlier, to just say a few words. He's a five-year survivor.
Amen.
And I've known him since he was five, really, really, I have. So make it fast.
I will make it fast. I do stand here as a five-year survivor of prostate cancer. And unlike other men, real men get checked. And a simple PSA check, regular exam saved my life. So I stand here as a proud, proud cancer survivor and supportive gift of life. I was fortunate enough to have insurance. But what about the ones that don't have insurance or underinsured? This group provides lifesaving test for them to survive. No one should die of prostate cancer.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much. And again, we invite all of you to please join us on Saturday, September the 10th. It's 8 to 2 o'clock. You can come at 11:30, when we're going to be hosting our prestigious Spirit of Love Award to a wonderful long-term partner supporter. It's the Southeast Texas Urology Associates. Dr. Denny Harris and John Henderson and his group will be accepting that award along with Don Shaver, who's this year's honorary prostate cancer chair, again, to spread the message for all men to get checked and to be there with us and take advantage of these services. And so we're, she had a call, she had to go out for a patient. But Dr. Gwendolyn Lavalley is the wonderful addition to our family, who is, I mean, she's extended care. For anyone that knows Gwen, she's been in this practice for more than 30 years, saving lives. And we feel so honored that she's part of our initiative because she literally goes the extra mile to reach out to each man, irrespective of whether they have insurance. We get calls from everyone, and they're lost. You know, when you get a cancer diagnosis, you just see our name, and you call us, irrespective of whether it's prostate or breast. So we feel so honored that Dr. Lavalley's with us. And thank you for being here and calling each person and answering the many, many requests for services when people are really desperate. So thank you for allowing us this much time to share this message. We're gonna be sending you an email and hopes that you'll be with us on September the 10th. And welcome your opportunity to see the services that your support is making such an impact for Beaumont men. Thank you very much.
Norma, thank you. And to Ms. Rogers.
Could we get one quick group picture?
Sure.
Do we have time for that?
Sure.
Okay, great. Our Men Against Cancer, will y'all please come back up? And everyone with Gift of Life will take a photograph?
But I want to say to this entire foundation, thank you for what you do in this community. So many other cities don't even have a program such as this. And because of your love, Regina, this is why we have it. And thank you so very much. And to each and every one of you for everything that you do. Yes. I know, she's my idol.
She makes us feel bad, Mayor. She's running circles around us.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll come up here and we'll take a real quick photograph. Could, do you mind?
Sideways, probably, longways.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Ms. Nysby. Give us a smile. Two, three. We got three?
Okay, can we step out? We'll just have our men in the pictures for the council.
All right, gentlemen. Ready?
Thank you so much.
Before I leave, before we leave, I'd want to tell you something funny. It'll take two seconds. We had a woman who called us one day and said, "I love the Gift of Life. I take advantage of everything that you all offer. When can I get my prostate cancer screening?" True, true story, true. Thank you again, we love you.
Thank you, we love you. She could take your place, huh? Also, we have a presentation with Mrs. Danielle Nettles, income partner with Leinbarger, Brogan, Blair, and Sampson. Please come forward to give your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, council, staff, and all of the electeds in the building. Excuse me. My name is Danielle Nettles, and as the mayor just stated, I am the partner of the Beaumont office here. And we actually handle the collection of your delinquent fees and fines for the Beaumont Municipal Court. Today, I have with us our capital partner, Mr. Richard Hill, out of the Houston office. I also have Mr. Brian Gross, who's our Director of Operations for fees and fines out of our Houston office. And we also have Ms. Vri Thibodeau, and also Ms. Page from the Beaumont Municipal Court on behalf of the city. Today, Mr. Gross will do the presentation for the collection report, and I ask him to come forward to the bench.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. As Danielle stated, my name is Brian Gross. I'm the Director of Operations with the Leinbarger Law Firm. And before I begin, I would first like to commend and show appreciation to both Vri and Victoria out of the municipal court. They make what we do a lot easier. They're great to work with. And as far as the way our program works, you know, you need the assistance of the court. And anytime we have a question or there's something that we need clarification on, they're extremely fast to respond, and they make sure that we receive everything that we need each month. So to begin, we received our first placement from the municipal court back in February of 2021. And we did our first mailings starting in March of 2021. And since that time, there have been over 60,000 cases assigned or sent to the Leinbarger Law Firm for us to collect the delinquencies. The dollar amount associated with that is a little over $21 million. There have been some adjustments in the amount of $81,000. And normally, adjustments take place on the court side if there's been some fees or some different things that may be removed as far as the court's decision. As far as citations collected, we have collected 4,759 delinquent accounts in the amount of $1.4 million for the city. Citations canceled, there have been 3,628 in the amount of $1.3 million. Now, so you understand citations canceled are any cases that are canceled by the court. And that means simply if the, whatever decision is made by the court, if the judge decides that an individual will do community service or if cases are dismissed, or if there's some other method in which that case is handled, the court will pull that back. So since February of 2021, we have resolved $2.8 million, which is a 13.9% of the placements that we have received so far since February of 2021. Now, to give you an overview of the collections activity, that'll be the next page in the packet that you had there before you. We have mailed 68,061 letters on behalf of the city, and we've updated addresses and phone numbers to in the total amount of 14,237. As far as phone activity, we have received 3,933 inbound calls, and we have made 256,000 outbound calls on behalf of the city to collect these delinquencies. The next page in the packet gives you an overview as far as the status of the accounts that are in the portfolio. So currently in the active status, which means that we are either mailing on them, skip tracing on them, they're in an active process within our system. There's 52,734 in the dollar amount of almost 18 million. To be specific, it's $17,943,000 worth. And then you'll see a breakdown as far as the status of the other accounts that are in the portfolio, whether it's attorney contact only, an individual has filed bankruptcy, and we have been advised. There is deceased or no estate, someone is disputing it. So as you can see, the breakdown moving down. The good thing is, if you look at the bottom, there's a total of 53,263 cases that have not been collected on as of yet. The good thing is 52,734 of those are in an active status, meaning we are either mailing on them or they're in a skip trace status where we are locating a good address and phone number on these individuals to make contact with them. The next page in the packet is just a portfolio overview. Again, you'll see to the far left up at the top, all the accounts, 53,263, with the dollar value associated with it. And it gives you a breakdown of the average balance for each citation. So the average balance is $340.35. If you look down, you will see as far as no mailing addresses, there's only 72. Return mail, 13,823. That means that those cases, once the first letter goes out or we've had a second letter go out, the first letter may have hit good address, then if they moved, or if it was initial bad address, then whenever it is returned to us, that mail is automatically processed through our system, and they start going through our tiered skip tracing system so that we can locate an address on those individuals. 39,368 of the cases, we have good addresses on. So we are making contact with those individuals. It also gives you an overview of the offense age. If you look at the total amount of cases, a little over 5% of the placements are one year or less. 8% are one to two years, 6% two to three, and then 79% of the cases within the portfolio are three years or older. The good thing with our service is we continually work cases, no matter how old they are, in the portfolio. We've actually collected cases, not here, but in other municipalities in the state that date back to 1954. So we continually work those citations unless they are recalled by the court. And then you have a placement age, and that is when the cases have been placed. And naturally, a majority of those fall within the one or two years, and that is because we enacted the contract back in February, well, started the process and receiving the placements in February of 2021. Then on the next page, you have a breakdown as far as the activity of the portfolio and the collections. And you'll get a breakdown on the far right, the dollars collected each month. So you can start back in February, that's when we received the first placement. And then moving forward up until present, there'll be a breakdown of the dollar amounts collected. You'll see the months where the spikes are. April, well, yeah, April and May of 2021, and then the spikes in March and April of 2022. Those signify whenever we are doing our spring sweep. And it falls in line whenever individuals are receiving income tax back. But this is a very large push that we make during those times. And that's when we get the best results as far as collections are concerned because of income tax. But over, you'll see at the bottom, we've collected a total of 1.468 million. It'll give you a breakdown again of the phone activity, addresses updates, and the letters that we have mailed since beginning collecting in 2021. If you look on the back page, it just gives you an overview of-- If you look on the back page, it just gives you an overview of what was collected. In the calendar year of 2021, we collected $903,397 for the city. And in 2022, so far, we have collected $564,724. Do y'all have any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Turner.
First and foremost, thank you for your presentation and the work y'all do. It's appreciated.
Yes, sir. It's an honor. Thank you.
When we say outbound calls, is it an automatic system that helps you out? Because I see it's a tremendous amount of calls. Do you guys use an automatic system?
The way our system works is we load batches of numbers within the system. That system calls the numbers, but as soon as an individual, a live individual picks up the phone, they are immediately connected to one of our professional collectors.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So am I reading this right? The collection rate over this last two years is 13.9%?
That is the resolution rate.
So what's standard? What are we looking for?
So right now, you are actually right on par as far as the resolution rate. We haven't hit the two-year mark. Normally, we like to be around 14% at two years. And then as you move and as we move forward, the longer the contract, and as we've had time to really actually work on a lot of those cases that are three years or older, that number will grow. Because the new cases, naturally, we're going to collect those. Those are the low-hanging fruit. The true benefit of our program is we work diligently on the older cases just as hard as we do the new cases. So by year three, you'll see an increase, and we'd like to be somewhere around 18% to 20%, and then four, mid twenties, and then after that, it can just continue to grow. It is just dependent upon the portfolio. Every portfolio is different.
Okay, so there's $18 million that's owed back to the city right now. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I believe so.
$18,128,000?
Yes, sir.
So what other tools in the shed do we have to go collect that? Because that money sure would come in handy about right now.
So what we're actually doing is we're going through our process next week, where we sit down, we sit down about every six months, and we evaluate each portfolio. And what we're about to do when we process that portfolio is we're going to implement, it is a program where we mail on hotspots as far as what we look at, as far as what the highest number of payments are, as far as do we go after the highest amount? Do we get a lot of payments for those? Do we get a lot of payments for citations that range between $200 and $300? What zip code, what area, you know, where are these, what are the areas that pay? So we're going to do like targeted mailings. We're going to start putting them back in place. Now that we have enough information and we've had the portfolio long enough, we're able to look back at the data and kind of break that down to see the areas that we can target.
So can we start putting liens on property?
Attorney.
Mayor, Council, I'm Richard Hill, partner with the law firm. And no, sir, we can't start putting liens on property for the municipal court violations that are set to us. These are generally criminal in nature. There are warrants that have been issued of a criminal violation for failure to appear on most of these cases. So the enforcement or beyond the efforts that we're making to get these debts collected, the real enforcement is working with PD in order to execute on the warrants that have been issued for failure to appear, not for non-payment, but for failure to appear in the court to answer the charges for which the violations are written for. But you can't put liens on properties for these accounts.
All right, thank you. I mean, I just kind of think back, whenever I get an automated phone call personally, the first thing I do is hang up.
Well, the automated-
It sounds like everybody else does, too.
The automated phone call does the dialing. The talk is done by a live person. So if someone answers the call, they're talking to a live person, not a machine. And the first thing that that live person does at our call center is to confirm that they're talking to the right person before anything else happens.
So can we get a copy of the people that owe? So I mean, I don't know if you publicly shame them or what you do with the information, but get that information out there so people know who owes.
Well, yeah. I mean, the city is already aware of who owes the-
The money.
The money, and what the violation was for. That information is available through your municipal court, so yeah. Or we can simply provide you with a spreadsheet of those names if you'd like. But that information is already known.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz, and then Councilmember Duria.
Beaumont, like many other places, has its share of scofflaws. And Mr. Hill, you mentioned a term, "failure to appear." Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
A lot of what you have, in fact, everything you have, has come to you as a result of some sort of judicial determination. By the time it gets to you, it's already been in court, and there's been some sort of judicial determination rendered that allows you to proceed. Is that right?
Most of the cases, there has been a judicial determination. But in all cases, the court has made an effort and reached out to these individuals to appear. Many of them have failed to appear after being requested to come to court by Vri and the staff at the court, who will notify them that they need to appear after that summons or citation has been issued. When they don't appear, there is a failure to appear warrant that has been issued. And by the time it comes to us, we have that as well.
So that brings me to what is the most maddening thing that I think I deal with on a frequent basis. When you have a citizen who absolutely just does not pay attention to these notices to appear, and over, and in fact, there's a, I think it's a Ward One situation, Councilmember Neil, but place over on Bandera, four times, they have failed to appear. And their house continues to be kept in a slovenly condition. It's upset all the neighbors. Maybe this is a question for the court staff. Maybe this is a question for the police department. It's probably not y'all's area, but what can we do when they just continually fail to appear? My thought is that it becomes time to send a police officer up there and help them find the courtroom. But, you know, what do we do? Maybe that's a charade question.
So they do, the police do an annual warrant roundup, and that usually helps resolve some of that failure to appear situation. It's collaborative across, and so they do a warrant roundup. They advertise to individuals. They post it, like you have a warrant, this is your time to come in and either settle your account. And they kind of have a reprieve a couple days where people can just kind of come in and get their accounts back in order, and then they start the roundup. Well, you either pay or you go to jail.
Okay, well, we know we're talking generally Class C, right? And so we also know that our jail is pretty full and that it's difficult to find places to put Class C.
So that was pre-COVID. Post-COVID, I know that, I'm not really sure what the status is, but essentially, you go, you can bond right out on any Class C. It's a 150 bonds. You can go and bond right out, and the cycle would just repeat. But prior to COVID, that was very successful, where they would do the rollout. Tell a boy going to jail, people would just pay their fines or go in and take care of their business. Sometimes it's as simple as, you know, the reprieve week would be really busy because individuals would try to get on some type of payment plan to avoid going to jail.
Mayor Protim, Duria.
Yes, Mr. Gross, for our audience and the folks that are watching, how is your firm paid for doing this work?
It's an add-on fee. The city pays us nothing. There's a 30% add-on fee.
So you get a percentage of what you collect? Is that how it works?
No, it's an add-on fee to what we're, so let's say the court sends us a $100 debt. There's a 30% add-on to that. So when we collect, we collect $130.
Okay.
And that's done through legislation 103.0031.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Statutory fee.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Duria, then Councilmember Felschel.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Turner.
I didn't even recognize that. I didn't even catch it. Well, and I understand we're going through municipal issues on today. I just wanted to know, who is responsible for, are you guys as well responsible for property tax collected as well? And I know we can't get into it. I just want to know who would we talk to in reference to that? If a citizen isn't paying, what are the steps?
Yes, sir. Our firm represents the city for delinquent ad hoc tax collection as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Felschel.
Just to answer your question, Councilwoman Turner, I think we spoke about this briefly. But if you want to talk to anyone regarding the taxes, you can always speak to our office, but the proper governing body is the taxes assessor collector. So if you have any questions, you can direct them to them, and we will assist them in answering whatever questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just looking at the paperwork, I think I found my answer. Thank you, though.
Just like to say thank you for a great report, and keep collecting.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we can use that money right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that will conclude our presentation. I would like to read, at the close of the City Council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplate our pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Caleb Fenter versus City of Beaumont, and Christopher S. Boone, Cause Number B-210.244, then Claim of Klickner Medal, and then Ronald K. Davis versus John D. Brown, Civil Action Number 1.22 CB00024. Thank you. Now, at this time, that concludes all of our presentations and proclamations. And if you would like to leave, I will give you a few minutes to exit. And I think everyone has left, so now it's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. The green light will come on. You will have three minutes to speak. And at the end of the three minutes, the red light will come on. I will ask that you please keep your comments as close to three minutes as possible. Thank you.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Okay.
None.
Thank you. So at this time, I will call for approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. At this time, we will have our work session. And Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the work session? Thank you.
Mayor, Council, we're asking to conduct a work session to review and discuss the proposed FY 2023 budget and capital program.
Okay, could you please, are you ready? Yes.
All right.
Go ahead and read the caption. Thank you.
Okay. And again, this work session is to review and discuss the proposed FY 2023 budget and capital program. You may recall that during the prior budget workshop, council asked for some changes to the proposed budget, and so we are going back over some of those changes today. Specifically, there was a request to increase the proposed property tax rate to 0.695, basically 69 and a half cents per $100 value, instead of the proposed 0.68, 0.5% tax rate as proposed. In addition, the proposed budget to be reviewed today also factors in a water rate increase less than what was proposed at 8%. So you can see the slide before you is Slide Number 1, which is just a summary of the general fund revenues and expenditures, which again reflects the increased property tax rate. And so if you look into the final column over that excess revenues over appropriation, you'll see a deficit of $320,000, which of course is less than what was proposed originally. Should point out that the increased tax rate has resulted in $920,000 in additional revenue, and that represents a fund balance. If you look at that final number to the bottom right, fund balance amount of $43,437,842, which represents a 29.83% fund balance of, represents 29.83% of the annual operating expenditure. You may know that our policy calls for 20%. Additional changes that we wanted to go over with you is, we do have some changes to how we propose to allocate the American Rescue Plan funds. After further study, we realized that we were essentially capped out at the $10 million allocation to the City General Fund Revenue Recovery. And we had originally proposed to use some of these funds for three fire trucks and five ambulances to be purchased over the next couple years. But we learned that that would count against that $10 million. So we have removed those line items from the ARP allocation, and instead, we've increased the sewer rehab line item for the ARP funding.
Come back, please.
Joe.
Yes. And as mentioned earlier, again, at the request of the council, we did adjust the proposed water rate up from 8%, which was what was proposed, down to 6%. And so this slide represents the adjustment of those amounts. In addition, we looked at some revised revenue rates from July. And we've also been looking at some possible savings and fee adjustments, which might help to make the ending fund balance projection better than what we expect. However, it should be noted that the resulting fund balance is currently estimated to be at 18%. And we'll talk a little bit about this more in a minute. Also, there's been some discussion about the payment in lieu of taxes. And you see that is, if you look at the expenditure, that final column there, the last line item of expenditure, payment in lieu of taxes. There's been some discussion about the payment in lieu of taxes to the general fund. I should point out that this transfer is spelled out in the charter, which allows a transfer of up to 20% of revenues back to the general fund. As a water customer, you may look at this and wonder why we're making this transfer. But we have to keep in mind that the water account is an enterprise fund. And probably a good way to think about that is it is, in essence, kind of like a business that has to be self-sustaining. However, it's a business that does not have to pay taxes. This is the payment in lieu of taxes as described. Um, it doesn't pay right away rental fees or franchise fees similar to other utilities like gas and electric. Uh, it relies on the city for accounting services, legal services, uh, purchasing services, benefits, account payable. So all the city services that are required to go, to support the enterprise fund, essentially those are funded through the city's, uh, uh, city's operation. And as a result, that's, um, that's why that amount is refunded back to the, is transferred, rather, to the general fund. I should point out also that we went back and we looked at prior years as to how much funds, uh, had been transferred out in, 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 uh, payment in lieu of taxes over the years. And this is in keeping with, uh, the amounts and, well, at least the percentages, because the amounts have certainly gone up over the years. But it's in keeping roughly with the percentages that have been transferred out over the years.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Councilmember Gitts.
With the payment in lieu of taxes, seven point nine million dollars, that has been the amount that we have transferred out of the enterprise fund to the general fund going back many years. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
If we ever tried to ascertain what the actual expenses are to the enterprise fund in terms of taxes, the city services that you provided that you just mentioned, I mean, is this just an arbitrary number or is this a number based on any, uh, study that has been done?
So in discussion, we have not done, uh, an analysis to see if this is a dollar for dollar. But we have to keep in mind that we're not just trying to cover costs. We're trying to make enough, um, revenue, um, so that we can in long term grow and improve and repair the system. But to answer your question, there's not been any analysis into a dollar for dollar cost. To that end, we have talked about, uh, perhaps looking at that, uh, in the coming months. In addition, uh, looking at a variety of, um, maybe on the revenue side, different op, options to, um, to increase revenues as well.
Well, well, to make it real simple, we probably wouldn't have to raise our water rates if we weren't transferring seven point nine million dollars out of the water fund. Now, the, the question gets to be is, well, are we then giving people that are outside the city, like in Northwest Forest or the prisons? Are we helping subsidize what they pay? And so I, I, I struggle with this because, um, you, in order to do work to repair our infrastructure in our water and sewer, we obviously need as much revenue there as we can. Taking seven point nine million out means that, you know, that, that's money that we don't have for that. But also, we are struggling to keep our fund balance at a certain level so that our bond rating isn't impaired. If you put that money or leave some of that money back in, then you have your fund balance, uh, at a healthier point. So I guess my question is, is it absolutely required that we transfer seven point nine million out or can we transfer some lesser amount out in order to avoid even a six percent increase or get some combination thereof and find that sweet spot where we can transfer some of this money out to the general fund, but also retain enough to keep our enterprise fund balance at a healthy level and to, um, avoid a six percent rate hike increase? I personally would like to see it no more than five.
Mr. Boone?
Right. Yes.
Could we get?
Yeah, real quickly. So to your point, Councilman, you could reduce the seven point nine payment in lieu of taxes. The, as you mentioned, though, if we go back here, you know, you, you, you're gonna have to make up for it by dipping, either cutting expenses somewhere else or dipping further into the fund balance. So if you reduced it, let's say by a million, you'd be looking at a deficit of one point three two million instead of the three twenty. But to your point, that, that, that's correct. And, yeah, we can hear from Todd, um, and we're gonna talk a little bit about the bond, the bond issue, uh, and the bond rating and the metrics that they're gonna look at when they do rate, uh, the bonds. Todd, do you have anything?
You kind of hit on all the points I was gonna talk about. If you reduce that transfer to the general fund, obviously it, um, it takes into account into that fund balance in the general fund. If you did away with the whole thing, which I know we're not talking about doing away with the whole seven point nine, but in two years, you, you would be under your general fund's fund balance requirement in just two years. So you don't want to continue to operate in a deficit in your, in your general fund. But as far as trying to put real numbers together on this, I did try to look at this today, this morning, and like most industries, your, or at least commercial industries, they're appraised on basically the value of that business and what that business income looks like. So in our water fund, we have over four hundred and seventy million dollars of assets. And that's that historical cost. So some of these costs go back forty, fifty years. So you could easily say four hundred and seventy million dollars over the last fifty years. I'm, I'm not an expert at this. We probably need to hire an appraisal group. But you could say that could be worth nine hundred million dollars today be, because of the fact that we generate over fifty million dollars of revenue and appreciation of that business. So nine hundred million dollars of assets translates into six point two million dollars in property tax. So that gets you pretty close to your seven point nine. Then you gotta think about the sales tax that they don't pay. That would go to the city. And then like Mr. Boone said, you got right aways, legal, H R, payroll, accounting, benefits, purchasing, technology services. If they were to hire all that staff, say ten people at a hundred thousand dollars, including benefits, that's a million bucks just for ten people. So I think it's easily justifiable to transfer seven point nine million dollars a year from water to the general fund to reimburse those lost revenues.
Councilmember Turner?
And Todd, Chris, I know that y'all said per charter, you can go up to twenty percent. I think it's important, Todd, today that based on this seven point nine number, what percentage is that so the community and the citizens understand and know?
So historically, it, that number used to be seventeen percent. Now it's like fourteen point eight percent because we've been holding that transfer level even though our revenues are going up each year.
And Todd, that doesn't affect our bond rating, does it?
It does, and we will talk about that in the next few slides.
Okay.
And Mayor, one more thing I'll echo that was mentioned is, is, again, if you, if you were to reduce the transfer, there is an argument to be made that, you know, the city taxpayers would be subsidizing those customers outside the city, um, who are not necessarily paying property taxes but are benefiting from the system. You know, maybe only a small percent, but it, it, it would be a percent.
I have a question.
Do y'all know what the percent is?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Neil?
So can we look at raising the rate for the out of city users?
So again, we're looking at, we're looking at a variety of revenue enhancements, including, you know, that, that of course is set by ordinance. But we, we're looking at what is that breakdown between internal customers versus external, outside the city? What is that percentage? We're looking at a variety of revenue. Um, we, we have a different methodology for how we charge apartments than we do single family homes and whether or not that makes sense. But this is gonna take some time to study, uh, but we do plan to do that in the coming months.
Councilmember Gitts.
On our out of town users, do we have a contract in place that requires us to honor a certain rate for a certain period of time? Is it month to month? Uh, when do these contracts expire if we have them? How does that work?
The rate is set by ordinance.
So we could at any time change, change the ordinance and raise the rates that we charge our out of town consumers?
Yes, sir.
And right now, it's a hundred and fifty percent?
Yes, sir.
And just thinking ahead, I know, I know where you're going with this. Our preliminary numbers, I haven't verified them yet, but maybe fifteen percent of our accounts are outside of the city. So if you're trying to make up, you know, three million dollars of revenue through a rate hike, that's only passed on to your out of city limit customers, that rate hike would be quite high.
Maybe they'll move that.
Well, but they're gonna have to pay their fair share.
And I agree. Right, right now, like we said, we don't want the, uh, citizens who live in the city limits to be upset about this because if you live outside of the city limits, you pay a hundred and fifty percent of the inside city limit rates. So we do, they do incur an extra charge, but how, how much more y'all wanna, that's up to the will, Council.
Mayor Protem Durio?
Todd, the, the majority of the, uh, out of the city customers, are they residential? Are they, uh, commercial, uh, refineries, prisons? What's, what's the majority of that we get this money from?
I don't have that report yet, but I will be following up on that.
Thank you.
Okay. And again, this is the, uh, comparison of some other cities. And you'll see, uh, we showed this slide last time, but of course, this is with the updated, um, rates. And you'll see again, we're, there are three of the cities that are, would have a higher rate, uh, in the list than we would if, if we move forward with this increase. And slide five is just a, um, a history of our fund balance, again, in that water fund. So you can kind of see how it's, it's dropping over the years. And as mentioned, um, you know, that fund balance and how it affects, uh, our bond rating as we look to go out for a bond issuance. Todd, do you have anything you wanted to add on this? Okay. So again, these are different bond ratings. And of course, the, the lower you go, the higher your interest rate, the more you're gonna pay for, for your money that you borrow. And so, you know, the, the metrics that, uh, that our rating agencies, uh, are gonna look at. Todd, you have anything on this?
I was just gonna say, back on the other slide, if you could go back real quick.
Yep.
So you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So you got ten ratings, basically. There's an, these are what's called investable class ratings. There's another class below here that I didn't show. It's called uninvestable. In other words, like junk bonds. So, and I don't want to alarm the citizens, we're in good shape, but we did go from the A plus to an A. I'm afraid, and this is where the discussion is going to lead, I'm afraid if we only do a six percent rate increase, we will get another downgrade to possibly an A minus. That only leaves three downgrades left. And it takes, sometimes it takes years to build your fund balance up. So I'm concerned if we don't act aggressively enough to get our fund balance up, right now we have a minimum fund balance of fifteen percent. The rating agencies changed the way they rate our bonds probably three or four years ago. They used to just look at fund balance and look at your economic, you know, indicators, uh, going forward. Now they look at, well, it'll be on the next slide, now they look at unrestricted cash and debt service coverage. So, um, well, I'll just let, go ahead and take it. Okay. So we, when we did a refunding back in twenty twenty-two, that's when we got our downgrade from an A plus to an A. And they used the FY twenty metrics that you can see here. The first one's unrestricted cash. So when they rated us, they rated us on FY twenty numbers because they were already audited. And they had an unrestricted cash of a hundred and ten days. And you can see their ratings to the, to the right of that. There's six ratings. Over a hundred and fifty is the best rating, less than fifteen days is the worst rating. So we fell in the second best rating. And then for the debt service coverage in FY twenty, we had a one point four. You, again, you can see the six grades of rating there. Top grade, one point six and above. Worst grade, less than one. So in FY twenty, when we got the downgrade, we were in the second best rating. I calculated the FY twenty-one metrics. So we're going from a hundred and ten days to eighty days. That's gonna put us in the third grade. And then for FY twenty-one and debt service coverage, we're going from one point four to one point two. That's gonna put us in the third grade as well. So I don't work for Standards and Poor Moody, but they're gonna look at those and we're probably going to get a downgrade on our next issue coming up later this year or early twenty twenty-three. And as we all know, when you get a downgrade, it in, it affects your interest rate. So when you're borrowing twenty to twenty-five million, that can add up pretty quickly on your, on your interest payments. So when we go out for that bond issue, they're gonna talk about these metrics and they're gonna say, what are you doing to improve your situation? So that's, I know, I know, I know you are in a tough spot with this water rate increase. We originally proposed an eight percent rate increase. I think it's needed. Actually, I think, I think we need more, but I understand you can only do so much in one year. So if we can get a, maybe a two-year plan going forward to have a minimum fund balance requirement of twenty-five percent, I think the rating agencies would like that because they're wanting, as you can see, they would prefer to have ninety to a hundred and fifty days of operating cash. That translates to twenty-five percent or more fund balance.
Councilmember Turner?
So Todd, that dollar amount from that eight percent to six, six percent, what is that dollar amount? I'm gonna make sure I didn't miss it.
So each percent we increase the rates, we get about another four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of revenue if consumption is consistent. It all depends on how much water is consumed.
The dollar percent, what was, what is that dollar amount for the customer per month?
So the way we have it now, 'cause we heard council, we, y'all wanted to lower the rate. So we got six percent in the slides right now. So if you want to go back to that one slide, I think it's a little over four dollars extra per month for the average residential person using six thousand gallons of water a month. So it's going from sixty-nine seventy-two in the highlighted column to seventy-three eighty-eight.
That's the si, uh, six percent.
When we had it at eight percent, I believe the monthly increase in the water bill was s, a little over six dollars.
That includes the sewer rate also?
Correct.
Todd, is there any other way that we can offset this?
Well, we talked about, you know, the in lieu of payment, but that goes against the detriment of the general fund. Other than raising rates, and, you know, the citizens gotta realize also, you know, we talk about record inflation. We talked about that last time. We talked about how the index shows eight to nine percent inflation. Well, that's an index over hundreds of goods and services. We buy limited goods and services for our water fund. And we've had contracts that came before this council where our chemical cost is going up over a hundred percent. We're not talking about eight or nine percent inflation for the water fund. Same thing with pipes and stuff.
Councilmember Gitts?
So the other way that we can, uh, change this is reduce operating expenses. Uh, you can either raise rates or reduce expenses. You got, you know, and I've proposed a number of times now, and I know it's not gonna move the needle a whole lot, but taking fluoride out of the water, you will reduce expenses. And although the cost of not having those chemicals purchased is And although the cost of not having those chemicals purchased is not huge, the damage that putting a caustic chemical like fluoride into our water system is incalculable. And we do know that it was just a couple of years ago that we had to replace our main seventy-two inch water line because of all the damage and the corrosiveness that had occurred because of the fluoride injection point. And that was a half a million dollars right there. So we've never had a workshop on whether or not it would be a good thing or a bad thing or what the council policy is on removing fluoride. But I can tell you, uh, cities all across Texas, all across the country are rejecting fluoride as something that should be done in their water supply. It would help, it would help. And, uh, you know, there's really no, in my view, sound medical reason to require it now because you can get fluoride to protect your dental enamel through mouthwash and toothpaste easily now when you used not to be able to do that. So I, I don't know if we can have a workshop on this. The prior city manager had said we were going to schedule one, it never happened. I don't know if we can just see if there's anybody up here on council and get a consensus today whether anybody has a, you know, gives a lot, gives them a lot of heartburn to want to keep fluoride. I, I, I don't know the best way to proceed, but I would like to talk about that.
Well, I don't necessarily believe a workshop is necessary. We just need to see what we're spending on fluoride versus, uh, the savings.
So mayor, just along those lines, for the chemical itself, I think it's in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. So it's not a lot. Now the question is-
Per year?
Yes, ma'am. My understanding though is it may have long-term impact on the infrastructure. So that's kind of a different question. But back to that point, it is required by ordinance, in the city ordinance. And so my recommendation would be to, if there's any interest, to have a work session to discuss the pros and cons. And then if there's consensus to move forward, obviously the ordinance would need to be amended.
I have interest. I don't think anybody else does, but I do.
Mayor.
Councilmember Samuel.
I, I believe it would be in our best interest to at least see what the impact would be, both health-wise as well as the impact on our infrastructure. Uh, I'm not certain that the amount of savings would justify any type of risk that might be involved. But, uh, I think it would be prudent for us to at least discuss it. And I think it would need to be discussed in a workshop. Not that I'm saying I'm favoring, uh, taking fluoride out of our water, but I, I would like to see what would be the impact, what's happening across the country, what's happening in our state. And so with that.
Mayor, if I could go back to your question about what can we do to help restore that fund balance or at least build it? We do have some ideas. So when people pay their water bill with a credit card on the internet, there's a user fee that actually gets passed on to the city. That's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We've been working with a company called First Transit for about twelve months now, trying to get onto their platform. And it would, it would pass that user fee on to the user, which is what almost every other entity-
Every other company does.
So that, that could save three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Another thing council could consider to look at is the ordinance on how we're billing multi-unit apartment complexes and mobile home parks. Per the ordinance, we bill them seventy-five percent of their units for the minimum charge. They pay for all their water, but as far as that minimum fee, we only charge seventy-five percent of their units. And I think that theory, I wasn't here when that was done, I think the theory is, well, they're not a hundred percent occupied, so it's un, it's unfair to the owners to pay a hundred percent minimum usage fees if, if they're only occupied seventy-five percent. But I did do some quick math on it. So there's over six thousand two hundred and fifty of these units in the city that we're aware of. And twenty-five percent of that is one thousand five hundred and sixty-two. If you multiply that by the minimum of twenty-three dollars and fifty cents, bring it out twelve months, that's four hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Another thing we can look at is there are some state agencies that get a twenty percent discount on their sewer service. That's something council could look at.
Wait, Todd.
Sure.
Going back to that apartment, so I'm consistently reading about how apartment complexes are almost full. And, you know, so for instance, if we raise that from seventy-five percent to ninety percent, what would that generate for us?
Well, I mean, if you raise it to a hundred percent, it would be four hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. So ninety percent of that would take off forty thousand from it.
Okay.
But again, you know, um, like I was saying, you could also look at what we're charging some of these state agencies for sewer. I'm not sure when the twenty percent discount got implemented, but it's been there for a long time. And then finally, I think, um, the manager over water said that he thinks our, um, water and sewer tap fees are underpriced. That could bring in considerable money also. So these are all things we could talk in a workshop. It would take council action on almost all of these items.
I'll second the workshop. That's almost a million dollars savings right there, over a million. And that way we won't have to raise water rates.
Well, this, this would be overtime, yeah.
Overtime.
Mayor.
Todd.
Mayor Pro Tim.
On those water rate increases, if we do six percent, will we need to do another increase next year?
Yes.
What about eight percent?
If we go to eight percent this year and consumption comes back to basically pre-COVID consumption, we're not sure what happened in the refineries, but our commercial water and sewer charges dropped one point three million dollars last year. So we're not sure if, you know, if they had shutdowns going on or, or what the deal was, but that was a significant loss. Another loss was two February's ago, we had the winter storm freeze. Well, as y'all know, we do a winter averaging for all of our residential customers. And we gave them all leak adjustments during that freeze. So my assumption is, is that that winter brought everyone's winter average down, which is billed in the summertime. So we saw, we saw a big drop in our sewer revenue this year. So we're hoping that consumption comes back, the winter average goes back to normal. We're going to have some stabilization in this, in the inflationary period that we're in. I said all that to say, it's possible we wouldn't have to have a rate increase next year if we go eight percent this year. It really depends on what the rating agencies tell me.
Well, with all of those factors, uh, coming back online per se, like you said, because the winter storm was billed, billed in the summer. And then the industry, uh, consumption went down, but to take into account, ExxonMobil was out of work for what, eight or nine months? And that's one of our largest, um, consumers. So hopefully with all of it coming back online, we should see some type of, uh, normal balance, wouldn't you think?
Well, that's what I'm hoping. Just, just remember, um, the revenue in this fund's large. So just one percent deviation in consumption or rate equates to almost five hundred thousand dollars of revenue. So it's very hard to project how much revenue this fund is going to make because we don't, we can't control consumption. And like again, I'm just being honest, I think if we go before the bond rating agencies this year with those two drops in the metrics that I showed you and walked you through, and they're going to ask me, well, what kind of rate increase did you propose? If I say the six percent, I don't think they're going to be happy with that. I think, I think that's going to lead to a downgrade.
And to the public, the downgrade is our credit rating, which of course, the lower your grade is, the higher you pay.
Right, so ultimately, we could stay at six percent, get a downgrade. The customers of the system are going to pay more in interest going forward. So you kind of want to just head that off in the beginning because that interest is going to far outweigh the other two percent. I mean, we're going from, you know, four dollars extra a month to maybe a little over six dollars a month if we stayed at eight percent. You know, and we showed y'all, I think in the last presentation, rate increases since two thousand and eight. And it ranged from, I think, five percent to eight percent. I think there's other cities that are doing more than an eight percent right now because of the inflation that affects this particular operation.
Which is pretty normal across the state of Texas? And you say they're doing more than eight percent?
Some are, some aren't, but we have an older system and we get a lot of complaints, you know, about the sewer, the water. So that's why it's important, we borrow the amount of money we're asking for to keep on top of all these infrastructure projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Gibbs.
You know, we, uh, we have spent a tremendous amount of money over the last few years in upgrading our water and sewer lines and our system, wouldn't you agree? So when we continually, continually talk the narrative that we have an older system, at some point, I'm going to start questioning that because we've spent a lot of money renewing our system. So I'm not sure how fair it is to say it's an older system considering how much we're spending to renew the system. And maybe, and I've, I've spoken to you about this before, maybe one of the things we need to consider doing is tapping the brakes a little bit on how aggressively we're doing things and wait for the inflationary times to subside. Wait for our bond rating to be able to be at a certain level. You know, I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't maintain the momentum that we're going with because I think it's important that we continue, continuously upgrade our water and sewer systems. But there may be ways to do that and not be quite as aggressive as we have been for these last two years. If we were to slow down a little bit, um, would we have to borrow as much money?
Yeah, we're going to have the capital program workshop following this and maybe we can answer some of those questions then.
We've got a slide we'll show you in just a second as to the progress we've kind of made, but we, we still have a lot to do.
Councilmember Samuel.
I'm, 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 I want to be cautious about what I say and what we as council members say to our general public. I am a lawyer by profession. I'm not a, uh, I'm not into water, sewer, I'm not into, I'm not a budget, an expert on the budget. But we have individuals that work on our budget all year. That's what they do. And for us to come and just summarily say, we don't want an increase at all, without knowing how our budget has been impacted over the past year, all the issues that we're facing. And then to hear us say, well, maybe we should not be as aggr, as aggressive on our infrastructure improvements as we say it should be. We looking at our city, the older parts of the city is where the worst infrastructure is. To say we are spending funds to improve the infrastructure in the older areas and say that there's not needs in, uh, the newer areas of our city, that's ludicrous. There's needs all over the city that have to be addressed. I come here once a week. I'm, maybe get out, well, every day, but I don't spend eight hours a day in my community because I have other things to do. But for me to question them without having the empirical data to base my assessment on is not fair to staff, nor is it fair to the citizens. So as we go through this budget process throughout the year, people talk about, well, we need to have this in our parks. We need to have this to come into downtown Beaumont. But we have individuals here seven days a week, or well, for sure, five days a week, working. They've done this over the past fifteen, twenty years. I just ask that we as a council be careful about how we make our assessments. Not just on what we want, but on the data that's being presented. And we look at that closely before we make decisions. For us to lose our rating could only, it could happen in a year's time. But we would not recover in a year. So I'm very concerned about what we're doing here that's going to impact my children, my grandchildren, or even us in the next five years. So if it means additional workshops, that's what I need. I need to see the information. I think if we take a look at everything that's available, workshop it, present it, let us make the decision then, but to say, I don't want to see an increase at all, that doesn't really make sense to me. Maybe there's some of the others out there, but for me, it's not about getting reelected. I want to make sure we're doing the best we can to make sure our city continues to grow even in the midst of, uh, the economic downturn, in the midst of storms. We're prepared to deal with emergencies. All of those things are important when we talk about the rates that we're setting and our budget process. So I just had to say that because I don't like some of the things I'm hearing in the way that we are making decisions about what we're going to do, but that's just me.
Mayor.
Councilmember Gibbs.
So let me be clear, I have not said that I don't think that we shouldn't raise our water rates to some extent. I recognize the need. I think eight percent is too much. I could probably live with six, I would prefer five. And I do think we need to look at ways that we can reduce our expenses and increase our revenues. And I can't speak for anybody else on council, but I know that myself, I've been having conversations with the manager and with the CFO to talk about these things. So I'm not coming in here shooting from the hip. You know, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm doing it based on knowledge that I've acquired through those conversations. So, uh, but yeah, I support workshops, it's just that we're kind of at the point in the calendar year that we're going to have to make these decisions. And I don't know how much time we have for workshops before these decisions are required to be made.
Mayor, to that point, real quick, again, of course, setting a budget, you, you start with the idea that we don't know what the numbers are going to be, we don't know what the water usage is going to be. We have to take our best educated estimates and put it into a budget. We've talked about, Todd's talked about a lot of potential revenue and things that we can look at in terms of the revenue and expenditure side. But it's going to take time, time for study, time for workshops, some ordinances have to be changed if we go down that road. So I think that's what we're talking about here is as we move forward in the coming weeks, you know, start to look at those things. So hopefully this time next year, you know, we won't have to look at a increase or, or as much of an increase. So.
Councilmember Turner.
Yeah. Chris, this is, uh, one of the issues that-
Yeah. Chris, this is one of the issues that we're facing while, you know, I kind of made the suggestion that in the future we can kind of get into these things early because it seemed like it's pressing and now it's time to make a decision and we're looking to make a decision by the thirteenth. And we still need data to make sure everybody's up here comfortable, making a proper decision. With the same expression of resecting staff who's done all this work, I understand both perspectives. That's why I was asking that, you know, in the future, I know this year's not what we can do about it, but can we start looking at this budget process earlier and start discussing some of the things and looking at some of the options?
So to that point, there has been some discussion about the process. Now, this is the the process we followed this year is the process we've followed in the sixteen years I've been here. I'm not a big fan of saying, you know, this is how we've always done it, so this is how we should do it. I'm not a fan of that. I know y'all aren't either. So there may be room for, you know, to look at moving forward, should we adjust the process to the extent that we can, right? So a lot of this stuff is set by ordinance in terms of timing. A lot of it, of course, is set by estimated revenue. So like when we get our estimated revenues, it's like the end of July, so. And we'll talk about the capital program here in a minute, but you know, moving forward, there may be it may be a time to step back and say, you know what, do we want to change something? Maybe more so the capital program, but again, as I mentioned, for setting this rate, I know, you know, y'all have a compressed period in which you need to decide.
What's the deadline, Chris, our?
Well, the plan is to vote on the budget September thirteenth. You could change the budget. The issue we have is because there are restraints in the charter and it it basically says if you want to change the budget, we're going to have to re-advertise, have another hearing. And that really, really messes a lot of things up. And so I think if there are any changes that we want to make, my, and I think Todd's recommendation would be to look at it through a budget amendment, which again would offer some more time for further study. And again, I I understand y'all's perspective where, you know, this, this is all kind of compressed, but we're we're limited by that timeframe as well. I I mentioned the charter and having to have another work, public hearing if we do make a change. We did take that to the voters to get that removed and the voters turned that down. So again, we're restrained to some extent as well, so. Just wanted to point that out.
And a lot of times when citizens are voting on amendments, when you're at the polls voting on amendments, the wording on them, I really don't think the public is really educated as to the effect of each amendment. And that's one of those amendments that's affecting what we're doing today.
Right, I think you you read that, you read that charter change language, whether it's a constitutional amendment at the state level or local and you you start to ask questions as you should and and wonder, you know, kind of what they're up to, but we, we, and then we're in a position where we cannot because of state law, go out and better educate or share what, you know, the reasoning behind it, we're restricted from all that. So it is, it puts us in a bad situation as well.
And not only that, I'm sorry, and not only that, I would rather take the necessary time that we need to make sure that we're making the best decision. You know, as Councilmember Samuel said, not only for today, but but for the future and then for our bond rating. Because the bond rating is so, so important. That's what has kept us in such great shape. You know, in the past, because of all of the storms that we've had, the, and and the monies that we've had to borrow. But we were in great shape because our bond rating was so good. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, either to Chris or to Todd. There's been question about our process and changing our process and the way we approach the budget and the timing. Can you give me a realistic understanding of how, how much time do we have to massage? How much time can we cut off of this process? How much sooner could this come to council?
I don't, in terms of the process, I think is the way we've done it is sound. As I mentioned, we we're we're kind of hamstrung because we don't get our revenue estimates, our, our tax numbers until the end of July. So we've got to rush to try to put it all together. It takes a lot of work, as y'all know from the budget staff, a lot of weekends and nights trying to put it all together.
So Peter, right there.
Well, just real quick, so I think there's been a lot, and we'll just talk about it, I think, a little bit in the capital program. I think there's been a lot more discussion in, you know, how do we, how do we handle the capital program? Because as you all know, you, y'all get that back in May. But even with that, you know, I think, I think there may be an argument to say, look, maybe informally earlier in the year, we take a look at the capital program so that the manager going into submitting it to y'all in May has better feedback. Y'all have better feedback in terms of where the capital program is. How far along are we in the fiscal year? Where do we expect to be? And then, you know, there's, we'll talk about in a second, a lot of, you know, new projects requested to be added. You know, discuss those as to, you know, does it warrant putting it in the capital program? But basically, you know, I think, I think on that, on that line, there's definitely an opportunity to maybe, you know, maybe try something new next year.
So you're saying that there's more flexibility in dealing with the capital program?
Yes, sir.
And that is a, a large part of the budget?
Yes, sir.
But the actual overall budget doesn't have the opportunity to move the deadlines because they are done by statute mostly.
Yes.
Is that an appropriate assessment?
Yes, sir. And our revenue estimates that we get from other entities, we don't get them till very late.
And by getting them at the end of July, we start working on this in August, so it doesn't, it doesn't give us a lot of time. But Councilmember Gads and then Councilmember Neil.
Chris, in fairness, the Jefferson County Central Appraisal District might give you their certified role at the end of July. But they are able to give you some pretty realistic projections much earlier than that, based on the number of protests that they have and the, I mean, they have a pretty good idea that what, they have a pretty good idea what their certified role is going to look like several months before that time. I I know you sometimes want to be rather safe than sorry and see what their certified role looks like. But realistically, we, we pretty much know probably sometime in June.
For property tax.
Yes.
And of course, property tax is obviously one of, well, the largest, you look at sales tax being one of the largest. And so again, the longer we wait, the better idea. So we've had, you know, our sales tax obviously is up this year, but that increase is starting to decline. So the longer you wait, the, the more information you have looking forward. As, as we discuss, you know, we have reduced the proposed increase in water rates from eight to six. Part of that, although we're still not as comfortable as maybe we'd like to be on that, one of the factors that helps us feel a little bit better is the July revenue for water, you know, so again, if you start doing earlier, the more, the less information you have.
Right, and I know what they say about assumptions and so, you know, but to Councilmember Turner's comment, you know, you can make some pretty, pretty solid projections and you know, we, we probably could start at, at least having some preliminary conversations a little bit earlier, I think.
I could interject on, on that. So the preliminary numbers that we get for appraised values, we do, we do get those starting in June. The problem is that's one number in a calculation rate sheet that's nine pages long. So it's full of adjustments. Three years ago, it was a lot easier to predict property tax revenue before you get your appraised values and figure out what your tax rate is going to be. And the reason is because you had room to grow your revenue eight percent. And so council's desire back in those days was let's just keep the property tax rate flat and our history shows that. Since Senate Bill Two, a couple of years ago for property tax reform, you can only grow your property tax revenue three and a half percent. And when you have large increases in appraised values, which we didn't have before two years ago, that forces you to lower your no new revenue rate. So it's almost impossible to predict what your no new revenue rate is going to be in this environment when you're limited to three and a half percent growth and your appraised values are growing at eleven percent a year and you have nine pages of calculations to get to your tax rate. I can do my best and try to calculate something for you next year and we can workshop it, but don't hold me to it.
Absolutely. Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Seminole, on page one twenty-eight of the budget, the statement of revenues and expenditures, that's, that's based off of the eight percent, correct?
In the budget we gave you originally, that's eight percent. I'm not sure if all of y'all received replacement pages. What we have on the slides here, and you could probably go back to the water fund, that shows the six percent.
Okay, so.
Yeah, what's on the screen there shows the six percent. The original budget that we gave you in your binder had eight percent.
Okay, my question on this, and this is pretty close to the one that I have, so our our expenditures are still higher than our revenues, so we're still not fixing the fund balance.
Correct.
So what's the break even number?
Okay, so currently, we're looking at a deficit of one point seven million. Honestly, you'd probably need another three to four percent on top of that six percent that's built in here to break even.
And this is based on full staffing for personnel, right?
Right.
So out of the water department budgeted, we have one hundred and thirty-one employees. Do you know what we're at right now?
I don't have the vacancy report with me. But I will tell you, in the Water and Sewer Fund, only twenty-three percent of the budget roughly is wage related as opposed to the General Fund where it's about seventy-five percent. So in the General Fund, it's easy to hold positions as people vacate those positions for a little while to, to have a buffer, to have some savings. It's a lot harder in this department because it's only twenty-three percent is tied to personnel.
So if you hold. Twelve point eight million, I believe.
Right, so if you hold those positions vacant, I'm not the manager of that department, but I, I think they're already wanting more people.
Well, and that's not where I'm going with it, because if I go back in the budget, if I look at pages one thirty-nine to one forty-three, which gives you the expenditure breakdown, the, I'm wondering if there would be any savings if we try to reduce the overtime.
Yeah, overtime is always a problem, especially with the amount of rain we get here. Bart might be able to speak to it. I know when we have heavy rains, we have to man our plants heavier, monitor them. We always have vacancies, so that's filled with overtime. But then you get the savings of not paying the regular wages of someone who would be in that position. But yes, overtime in this fund and the solid waste fund is always high.
Okay.
But that's areas in which we can cut back when we can cut back. I mean, there's there's ways we can save, there's some savings in the budget that we can come to.
Right, when we budget, we do, you know, we're, we're guided by the conservative principle. It's just an accounting standard. So when you're budgeting your revenues, you don't want to be real optimistic. And when you're budgeting your expenditures, you want to be kind of pessimistic. And the purpose of that is to make sure you don't go over your budget. Our intent is to grow the fund balance over time, not lose fund balance like we're doing now.
Which was my original question, even by increasing it, we're still going to lose fund balance based off of this budget right here if we stay at full personnel?
Correct.
We currently have eight vacancies.
What's the dollar value you're putting at a?
For those vacancies?
Per person. What do you, is it, you used to use sixty thousand?
I think for the water fund, I think around sixty-five, seventy would be a good average, but that includes pension, payroll, insurance.
All right, last quick, could you use any, any of the other CARES Act money to shore up that fund? On top of the eight percent.
So what we've done two years ago, I think we sent seven million dollars to sewer main rehab, seven point four million, and this year we're sending four point five million for sewer rehab. That saves us, that basically says we have to borrow that less much when we go out for bonds. I don't even think I said that right. A terrible tongue twister for me for whatever reason. But anyway, that's less money we have to borrow because of the American Rescue Plan Fund.
Well, and that, that kind of downplays it a little bit because if you look at the other line items on the first ARP, there were several lift stations, chemical plant improvements, the sludge drain, so that was our focus in, in trying to allocate ARP money to water and sewer. It was a safe allocation per their guidelines, but it also put the money where we got a lot of benefit from it by putting it into capital investments and not have to borrow the money for it.
And when is the second round of money?
We've already received it, we received it in June, we're just wanting to get your approval to know where to book it.
Okay, we can move on.
Okay. And again, slide, slide eight here just again shows the Capital Reserve Fund and as mentioned, we're going to transfer additional funds here for the fire trucks and the ambulances. So now we're going to go into the capital program. And again, the capital program, of course, is a a five-year plan on investing in larger, long-term capital assets. The projects before you hear on slide nine are current water projects. And slide ten shows new proposed water projects. Listed there at the top, I will point out, if you look at the bottom of the slide with the funding sources, you know, sometimes there's discussion about you know, the city going out for adequate grant funding and this, this you can see under the funding line items from FEMA, CDBG, Restore Grants, text dot ARP. That of the seventy-eight million dollars in projects, fifty-eight are grant funded, which is approximately seventy-four percent. However, you'll see at the very, the final line item is funds needed to complete the water projects, so that goes into the, the need for the bond that we discussed earlier.
Mayor.
Councilmember Gads.
Under the new projects, this Pine Street Chloride, Chlorine Dioxide Injection. I, I'm told that we had a chlorine dioxide injector at the water plant previously. Is that incorrect or do we need to? Why do we need to do, do this if we've had one previously?
A bit over a decade ago, they tried putting chlorine dioxide in as an enhancement to the disinfection process, not to address manganese or, or iron and settle that out. It was put in to, again, a bit over a decade ago, it was turned on for a day or a matter of days and it clogged the filters.
It was turned on for a day or a matter of days, and it clogged the filters. So again, they were trying for additional disinfection. What they got was they dropped all the manganese out right in front of the filters and then clogged the filters because of that design. So that system, the only thing left of it is a few injection points and a tank. There's no, I mean, it's been over a decade, so it's been sitting for more than 10 years. I think it was 2010-ish, right in that timeframe.
2012?
Somewhere around there.
That's before I got on City Council. Okay.
All right, slide 11 here shows the current sewer improvement projects. Again, these are in the current capital plan. Slide 12 shows the proposed new program, projects. And then again, as you can see, at the bottom, the additional 1.7 million needed to complete these projects, which you can see the line is 25 million for the new bond issue. The next few slides, I'm going to show you some of the items in the capital program, but also wanted to take the opportunity to kind of show some of the work that has been done, is planned to be done. You can see here a map, a little bit hard to see at this scale, but the red indicates plastic pipe, which we would consider newer pipe, although some of it may date back decades, but it's the newer preferred pipe. And then you can see the black lines are other, so those are the ones that we would be targeting moving forward. I should point out, some of the plastic pipe in the West End isn't necessarily pipe that we've replaced, but pipe that has been installed through the plating and development of new neighborhoods. So a lot of that's privately funded through the development process.
Chris, I want to amplify that, you know, because there's some in the community that think the city at times unfairly provides to the West End at the expense of the North End and the South End. And what you just said is a very salient point. You can look at the West End and you see a lot of red there, but a lot of that was done through the development process and not by the city. Is that right?
Correct. Bart, do you want to talk a little bit about this?
So these next two slides cover the Colliers Ferry Pump Station. That project's been let out for construction in July. Total project cost 29.05 million. It'll be located at Colliers Ferry Park on, right when you get into the park, if you would look over to your right, that hill that raised up off the parking lot, that's where the pump station will be. And the site was over or dry during Harvey, so it was not flooded during Harvey. It's going to be scaled to 45 million gallons per day production at max. What we're going to do is we're micro tunneling from the old Lawson's Pump Station on this side of the river to the new pump station, so we'll still be relying on the siphon under the river and Bunn's Canal to feed the raw water, but we'll have improved resiliency due to getting it out of the flooding right along by the river that we've experienced with Lawson's.
Councilmember Felschel? Councilmember Gitts?
Bart, how many gallons do we pump a day now? What kind of increase would that be?
Right now, we're probably somewhere around 30 total to the city in the month of August with the hot weather. During the winter ice storm, we got as high as 38 million gallons a day, at least as a rate. But normally, if we're not in really hot weather, we don't have a lot of consumption during ice storms, we'll be around 22 to 25.
So that gives us, we feel, plenty of headroom for growth in the city and consumption?
Yes, sir. It gives us growth capacity, gives us the ability to pump additional water if you're in a situation where you have water breaks or ice storm.
Thank you.
And it's going to also leave us with the backup, correct?
Correct. We'll still have Lawson's there as an alternative so that we can switch between the two for maintenance activities. It'll leave us better positioned.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that begs a question. Can you, could you run both of them at the same time?
I don't think we could unless we invest in putting an additional crossing across that river, because again, we're micro tunneling over to where Lawson's is. There's going to be a set limit choke point going through Bunn's Canal and under the river. So to get it to where you could really get more than that, I think you'd have to address the river crossing and the canal.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gitts.
You know, five years ago today, we were underwater here in Beaumont, and we did not have water service in Beaumont. So I understand the desire to have resiliency, but I have the concern that we still have a single point of failure in that pipe that goes under the river. And yeah, if something happens to that, we're knocked out, you know, so...
Well, we're kind of never done with this process. So we did look at putting a separate path across the river as part of this project. The costs were too high for the money we were looking at at the time. So the plan is to finish the pump station, assess the condition of the pipes under the river, and then make a call at that point as to whether we need to rehab the pipe under the river, whether we need to put an additional one in. But yes, we're still, there's still a single point of failure. If you lose Bunn's Canal for some reason, or you would lose the siphon under the river, that would hurt you. You do have an emergency intake at Lawson's that you can open up and pull water right off the river. We did that during the ice storm, so it's not a complete failure if you had a problem with Bunn's Canal, but it is a risk point we'll have to address in the future. Okay, so with the pump station, we need a new raw water transmission line from the pump station to the plant. We plan to bring that along Pine Street. We won't go into construction on this project until roughly December of this year. It'll be a 48-inch diameter pipeline, about 15,000 feet in length. It will include a piggling station for cleaning and maintenance so that we can maintain that line in the future. And this does give us redundancy for the transmission line to the plant in addition to the pump station. That's an 18.3 million dollar project estimated. The chlorine dioxide pretreatment, we had looked at discolored water. The primary recommendation was to, right now, what we do with the water off of Pine is we have a sequestration of the manganese and iron, meaning we suspend it in the water with a polymer. So as that water ages, we can drop that manganese and iron into the pipes as a sediment. By pretreating with chlorine dioxide, we will remove the manganese and iron, so we won't be pumping additional manganese into the system. Right now, the estimated project cost is 2.4 million, and we're just now entering into the engineering phase on that. Estimated completion, if, at the current time, would be roughly quarter one, 2024. So Chris had asked us to look at resiliency in general with the system. So these are some current projects and future projects that improve resiliency within the water system. The first is electrical building flood improvements at the Pine Street Plant. We came very close to flooding out the electrical building during Harvey, and it sandbagged it. So this project puts a wall around that building and floodproofs it. It says here that we're raising a generator, but that's not, that's a misprint there. I think it was meant to be in a different spot. So we're just floodproofing that electrical building itself. The two main generators are already raised. There is one older generator at a lower level that in a future fiscal year, we'll probably be trying to look to replace and renew that. So we've done everything on this project except for the gate, which we're just waiting on because of supply chain issues. Other than that, it's complete. The second project is to improve the chemical storage at the plant on Pine. This is in good part resulting from TCQ requirements for us to store more chemicals on site. It will improve our resiliency because you get into a situation like a winter storm or hurricane, and we'll have more treatment chemicals at the plant and be less reliant on deliveries during those events. The construction cost is estimated 1.7 million, and we plan, actually, it's been let, it got let this month, so we're underway now. And then that Loeb, when we do FEMA projects, we also get mitigation money potentially, and so we looked at Loeb, and we're using mitigation money on this project to go ahead and elevate the replacement generator that's coming into that site, as well as motor starters and some other electrical components at Loeb. So that'll get all of this equipment above where the Harvey flood level was during Harvey at Loeb. It won't do everything. Looking at trying to elevate the entirety of the site above the Harvey level was really expensive, but we're trying to maximize what was available in FEMA mitigation money and do what we can at the present time. And then the remaining project is an additional treated water line out of the Pine Street Plant. Currently, we have two treated water lines that come out of Pine Street and feed the city. They're very old lines, roughly put in around the 50s. So what this project will do is install another 42-inch finished water line off of Pine Street. It will also install four valves into the system, allowing us to isolate these main lines coming in. And then the plan would be that after we have the new 42-inch line in, we would then isolate and inspect the other two lines in sequence, and then depending on what we find, we may potentially need to project, bid a project and replace those lines at some point in the future. But we're trying to get proactive. Instead of waiting for something to happen with these really older lines, we want to get ahead of it. We did postpone this one. We're currently estimating January 2024, just due to availability of total funds.
Councilmember Turner?
Hey, Bart, out of curiosity, do we know like a number amount, a rough estimate amount of how much we spent or invested on Loeb? I know that one comes up quite a bit.
I can get that. A lot of what we've put into Loeb here recently has all been FEMA repairs from Harvey.
Okay, great.
And that there was a slide that kind of broke that down, but I can, we are entering into an agreement with Freeze to look at the long-term viability of Loeb as opposed to a potential West End water treatment plant and form a longer-term, 25 to 50-year strategy on whether we continue to invest and improve Loeb, or whether we should go in another direction. When we finish that study, we plan to bring it to council and talk about that.
And one more question to follow up, Bart. With Loeb, and I know you've probably done this in the past, but for people who are watching who may not understand what the Loeb does for us, can you kind of break that down for them?
Sure. We have two water sources at the city. One is we pull water off of the Nature's River and treat it at our Pine Street facility. Loeb is a groundwater treatment facility north of Beaumont in Hardin County that takes groundwater from three wells, treats that, and pumps it into the system on the north side.
Thank you, Bart.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bart.
Okay, and the next slide is the, just shows the asphalt street rehab program. The lines in red show pending Phase Four. The lines in yellow show under construction, and then the green lines are completed. And then same thing with the concrete street rehabilitation, citywide. And again, this is, you see a lot of green, of course, in the southwest part of the city in the west, and there tends to be more concrete streets in the West End, more asphalt in the older parts of town. And this is the pavement preservation program, Phase One under construction, shown in red. And here's the citywide ditching rehabilitation program map. Again, you see Phase One under construction, and then the red lines indicate planned.
I should point out, there is a misprint on this slide. It's $2 million estimated to be spent per fiscal year for the ditching.
Does it start fiscal year 23?
The ditching's underway now. We're doing, for Phase One, which we show under construction here, we bid out half of it, which awards two and three, and they're ditching currently. We should get the survey information for awards one and four in the coming weeks, and then we'll bid out the last half of Phase One. So that'll complete the 2 million plan for this year. And we have another 2 million already in the CIP for next year. I guess I should repeat on this. The plan is to do 20% of the city per year for the next five years, and that will complete our ditching of the entirety of the city. And then we'll address whether we think we can handle doing the periodic maintenance of those ditches in-house, or whether it's a combination of in-house or contractor. But in the past, we've just addressed problem areas, and we're trying to get proactive and have the ditches in good shape and maintain on a periodic schedule so that we just continue that instead of reacting.
So do plan to do the maintaining, you're just trying to decide whether or not you're going to put out?
We just have to assess how much we can do. We have three gradealls in the department. It's difficult to maintain gradeall crews because you have to find a CDL licensed operator that can also, you know, operate a gradeall and ditch well. And it's difficult for us in the current environment to try to keep them. We tend to get them hired away from us.
Find a way to keep them here?
Well, we've raised the money, and we haven't got it up high enough yet, so...
And then the final slide is the general improvements portion of the capital program. The only change proposed for FY '23 from the current fiscal year is, you may recall there was a Rogers Park Dog Park that, in the amount of 460,000, which was in the Projects for Consideration category. And so proposed for this upcoming fiscal year is 1.46 million for what we're referring to as the Parks and Recreation Enhancement Program. The idea behind this new proposed Parks Enhancement Program, let me start with the amount. So essentially, it was taking the 460,000 from the current fiscal year and adding a million dollars to the program. And what is proposed is, I would say, in the last several months, we've gotten a lot of requests for enhancements, quality of life enhancements to the parks, mostly to parks. And so in an effort to try to bring some of those projects to fruition, what we've proposed here is this new program. And in our mind, the way it would work would be somewhat similar to the CDBG program, where we would take a list of known needed projects, assemble a... a list of requests from each ward, and then submit that to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for their consideration study and recommendations, similar to the CDAC. And then that would be brought back to the administration and then to city council for final allocation. We do have 36 parks. We try to make quality of life a priority, but of course, it has to compete with a lot of other needs throughout the city. But, the idea is that moving forward, this perhaps might be an ongoing effort to try to make some improvements in some of our city's parks and recreation areas. So, that's the idea behind that. But, again, that's the only change really proposed from the current fiscal year.
So, the million dollars that's been added in there to the parks on top of the 460, there's no, there's nothing to find on what that million dollars is?
So, in the past five months, I've received probably 12 requests for different Parks and Rec elements, which is well in excess of a million dollars. So, to answer your question, it's not, there's no direct estimate on what that million dollars would be, except to say that of all the requests, it's well above a million dollars.
I struggle with voting for something on not knowing what it is.
Chris, will we have a breakdown of the 4.1.4 million, the breakdown of how it will be spent?
So, I have a list of the dozen or so requests I've gotten, but again, it's in excess of 1.4. Many of those requests came in within the last few weeks, so I don't have, we don't have good estimates on what that is. But, again, the idea behind this would be, in the coming months, come up with estimates, come up with recommendations from the Parks and Rec Committee, and then bring it back to council for allocation.
I guess my thought process on the capital plan, specifically projects for consideration, just about anything can be added into that prior to it being moved up to the design or construction phase. And, I don't know, I guess I just struggle putting a lump sum in there and not knowing what the heck it is, and then just saying we'll decide at a later date when none of those things started out at the projects for consideration phase. Because there's lots of projects that have been in here for several years that, I don't know, it doesn't even seem like we're looking at them anymore.
Have a thought for consideration. So, if you take those projects that Chris mentioned to the committee, and they brought back a recommendation to council and say council doesn't want to do any of them, we didn't borrow money for that 1.4 million. It came out of general fund, fund balance. If y'all don't want to allocate that money, we could always return it to the general fund later.
But, I believe there's enough projects because Councilmember Mayor Protem Durio, I believe, has submitted, or either CVB, CVB has submitted, but I'll let you speak on it, Mayor Protem.
No, it's some of the projects, the one that we, in particular, is more of, isn't an investment in our athletic complex, and we've already, if I'm not mistaken, we've received bids on it already, have we, Chris?
Yes, sir.
And as far as turfing some of those fields, because they, we have, I don't know if y'all know, we have a lot of baseball tournaments and softball tournaments that come to Beaumont and raise a lot of money, bring a lot of people in for those weekends. Sometimes, you maybe have 100 teams, you know, each one of those have 12 to 15 players on it, and they all bring parents and sisters and brothers, so it's more of an investment. And those fields, whenever it rains, if they, if it rains, they can't play. But, if we hit three of them with turf on the infield an hour after it rains, then they could still play. We just had one last weekend, big tournament, well, it was pretty, only had about 20 teams here, but they were at the fields, ready to play. They had the council. Some of them had flew in from out of town. So, that's, I met with Chris and Jimmy Neal and Dean Conwell on that, and was hoping to get that done in time for them to be able to be used next year for the next season.
But, I guess my point is, is why wouldn't, why didn't something like that brought to us to be placed onto the capital plan as a single project?
Well, we received about 12 projects, and so the question is, to be fair to council, my recommendation would be to get the input from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee instead of bringing them all before you.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you. Roughly about a year ago, a suggestion was made that, you know, maybe Parks and Rec's departments can go out and identify issues and actually prepare a plan and submit it to us prior to, you know, where we at right now. And to kind of get a clear understanding, we didn't get to that. So, when we look at this dollar amount, which last year, how much was it that we allocated to this particular thing? Was it?
Zero.
Okay. So, when we look at the significant increase in the dollar amount, I think, and I can't speak for Councilman Neal, but for me, I would like to see like a projected plan of how it's going to look. And that's why the suggestion was made almost a year ago, let's start working on this now before we got to this point. And that was something that I think could make us all feel better, and we could probably even have an idea of what it would look like on what we're planning on doing.
Yeah, let me, let me give you a list of what was requested of the manager, and that is artificial turf, baseball fields at the athletic complex that Councilman Durio mentioned, hike and bike trail at Terrell Park, a walking path at Liberia Park, covered shelter at Sprott Park, new four-wheeler side-by-side park, new park next to John's Library, new park at the Old Price Elementary School, upgrade basketball courts, let's see, racquetball court facility at the athletic complex, complete the viewing stands for the tennis events, upgrade the lighting at the athletic complex, dog park at Rogers Park, a merry-go-round at Rogers Park, a BMX bicycle course at Pearlstein Park, and then complete the Equestrian Trail at Terrell. And again, they all seem to be, you know, great projects, good quality of life projects. I just think as a way to try to move some of those forward, again, my thought was to put a program in the capital, but capital program whereby the Parks and Rec Committee could look at it in the same way that the CDAC looks at CDBG funding, and then bring those, bring the recommendations back to council for final allocation.
And to follow up, Chris, with the, because we're talking about Parks and recreational enhancement, do you know our current recreational activities that we have specifically for our youth, like?
Like team sports, like softball, track, we have pickleball, probably more for seniors. Those would be the big ones that I could think of.
Yeah. And my reason, my reason for asking that is, and I've discussed this with you, and I said it in front of council before in the past, in the city of Beaumont, we currently have five guys in the NFL actively playing, and those guys are PJ Locke, Mike Jackquitt, Tony Brown, Ryan Grant, and Keith Corbin. In the past, you know, like when you look at flag football or anything in reference to football, we don't really have facilities or places for these kids to practice. We have kids that are actually practicing out in front of the grass at Westbrook High School. We got kids that are kind of practicing wherever they can find a place. I will say, the city has done a great job with Sprott Park. I'm going to compliment that. But, when you have these little league organizations, and we're actually being successful at these things, I'm just looking at it from a recreational perspective, I want to say, I would like to know, like, why aren't we at least doing flag football, or at least providing the space with some of the open grass that we have at the parks, at least marking it up so those kids can actually have somewhere to practice. And, you know, second that, with Beaumont Little Dribblers, it hasn't been in existence, man, I think this is going on the third year. And just to piggyback on what I said earlier, you know, we have Beaumont United, they just won state to state championships back to back. You have, you know, guys that's playing professional ball like Christopher Richard, Jamar Gully, Najah Pearson, TJ Atwood, Mike Zino, and they're all from Beaumont, and we don't really have a little dribbler program for our youth. But, and I have nothing against tennis, softball, baseball, but we actually are having success in these particular areas, and I don't understand why aren't we supporting that just as much as we're supporting some of these other programs?
Right. So, maybe advisable to have a work session to discuss what programs do we have and what programming, you know, might we want, and then try to cost it out and then figure out how to get there.
Councilmember Getz.
Kind of following up on what Councilmember Turner just said, you know, some of these recreational aspects that the, of the programming have traditionally and historically been the responsibility of the school district. And I think it opens doors for us to collaborate with BISD to provide opportunities for our youth to do things like practice football, maybe at some BISD facilities, with some of the middle schools, elementary schools. Maybe there are ways we can collaborate with, using their gymnasiums for little dribbler programs. I think that that is all worth conversations. But, it all gets back to what Mr. Boone is saying as far as the process. We have to have a process to do this, and running this through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and having them look at this and make suggestions, and then bringing it to the administration and to council is a process that, you know, I would support. I know one of the projects that you mentioned was one that I put in there, and that was the Dog Park at Rogers Park. And, you know, I've been working on this for four years now, and, you know, there's almost 3,000 people that have signed a petition asking for it, and, you know, I've been told in the past that there's a process you've got to follow. So, I've attempted to follow that process, and, you know, now we've got some money potentially being put into the budget if this is approved, and although that's just one small tiny bit of it, it should be part of the process that goes before the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and then ultimately to council.
Councilmember Samuel.
This is, I think it's, I agree with Councilmember Getz. It's about the process, and I do understand he's been working on Dog Park for years. There was a process that was put in place, and I think that should be considered. I believe that we have funds available, and now we need a process for those funds to be allocated for the needs of the community. Now, and that's why I like the idea that you mentioned in bringing the projects to Parks and Recreation Committee, and then it comes to council for consideration and approval. Because one of the things I understand, and I hope we all understand, is that this is not like pork belly politics where you can go in individuals. This is not us for individuals, our desires, what we want to see, but it's what's going to be most beneficial for the masses of our community. And by having that process, I think that takes some of the political motives and ideas out of the process. And then it comes to council, and then we make the decision from there. But, without those projects having been filtered through another body, I think your idea is good, and I agree with Councilmember Getz that that's probably the best way to do it, is to send it to a commission for approval and then to us.
Councilmember Turner.
So, and I, and with it being a process, definitely I was asking, I kind of want to know, how did we get to identifying those activities as something we would actually have staff working, performing, and taking care of when we talk about tennis, golf, and softball?
Right. So, I'm thinking about this in two different ways. One is the capital program for like the new amenities we're talking about, which would go through the Parks and Rec, through that process we just talked about. In terms of the programming, which again, there could be some overlap, but in terms of the programming, in my mind, there probably needs to be a workshop to discuss, again, what programming do we have, you know, recreation for a city our size, for cities like Beaumont, you know, what are we missing? And then, again, identifying what that cost looks like and how do we get there? So, there may be some overlap there, but in my mind, it's kind of two different, two different paths.
So, am I correct in understanding, you know, we already have projects that we are allocating funds, that's been proposed, planned, and allocating funds for. But, now we're talking also about those programs that are not being identified or even utilized in the department. And that's where we have the workshop and look at how we're going to determine what programs we want to sponsor as a city, whether we want to do it on ourselves, work with BISD, or even individual, there are football teams out there now. There was a guy, he's been raising money, he's doing the football all by himself. So, if we put into our department, in our Parks and Recreation, a football program, that could be utilized in the overall community also, and open up the door for those who've been doing it on their own to provide these things, that gives them an opportunity to get funding or help in that program. So, I believe that's a good idea.
Councilmember Durio, then Councilmember Getz.
What's what Councilman Samuel and Turner were talking about, there are some football programs already out there, it's already operating. They're just looking for a place to play. We have parks, they've already measured them, they have the right dimensions, they would just need us to come in and mark them so the kids could have a place to play and a place to practice. Now, some of them want to some, and this would be a little more expensive, like putting up lights at Sprott Park so they could play at night. They just, I don't know if they so much want us to run the program, they just want us to help facilitate and give them a place to be able to play and practice. And when you talk about marking a field, that's not, that's not really, that's not a lot of money. We talk about putting lines on the field and maybe putting the little yardage markers out there for them.
Bleachers.
Yeah.
Councilmember Getz.
So, I want to jump over to the property located at 555 Main Street with an estimated cost of $5 million. The city is about to send out a, I believe we're about to send out a request for proposals to see if there's any people in the private sector that want to do something with that property. I know we've already had one offer on it. Let's assume for a second, and again, there's that word, but let's assume for a second that we find somebody that wants to do something with that property, and we end up selling that property and recover our $3 million that we've put into it and don't have to expend the additional $2 million to tear the building down and develop that site in some manner. That $5 million no longer goes from a liability, but I presume it's money that we can plug back into the budget to use for other purposes. Is that right?
So, if that line item does not move forward, then you would adjust it through a budget amendment or through the future budget?
Okay. So, we still have it there though, as if we're proceeding with. Okay, so we, we still have it there though, as if we're proceeding with the, uh, course of, uh, tearing the building down and developing the site. And, uh, I guess that's the plan until there is, until that's no longer the plan, is that, is that fair?
Yes, sir, the plan is to issue an RFP in the next two weeks. Um, and, you know, of course, bring it to council to decide, but if the, if the desire of the council is to move forward with, I guess, the original plan, which is outlined in the, in this line item, then, um, then, yeah, my recommendation is that it needs to stay in the budget.
Yeah.
If that were to change, then you could amend the budget later.
And, uh, you know, that, that for me is difficult to, uh, vote for that because I've, I've said all along that it's probably not the best way to handle that building and, um, I am grateful that, um, the administration is looking for investors now and, uh, taking a, another look at how to proceed on that. Um, so I guess we'll just have to let that play out.
Councilmember Turner.
Uh, since we're talking about improvements, the River, the Riverfront Park improvements, Bart, do we have an idea when, you know, like RFPs will go out for some of those improvements that the Corps of Engineers and everyone approve? I think everybody's pretty excited about this project, that's why I'm asking.
Probably should, should have said Riverfront Park Bank Stabilization because it's primarily to, to form back up the bank on there, though there are some improvements in the park. Um, we've got the plan substantially done, we've kind of held on putting it out for bid because we're trying to work through that BP oil money process. Um, so we're hoping that we can get through that and then probably put it out for bid in the November timeframe is what we're thinking right now.
Okay, and just, uh, the second follow-up to that is, you know, once it's, if, if projected, if we get it out in November by minimum, the RFP normally goes out for about thirty to sixty days and
Sixty days.
Yeah, and we can kind of, if everything goes as planned, we can hopefully be seeing some work done around.
Probably three, four months after that, depending on when, uh, mobilization is, et cetera, you'd start seeing some activity, yep.
Okay, I just know a lot of people excited about that one, so I just wanted some clarity.
Believe me, I'd like to get it off the plate.
Okay, thank you.
It would be nice.
Mayor.
Councilmember Getz.
So, following up on Riverfront Park, I understand that most of the engineering and design work has been done with regard to the stabilization and is that accurate and fair?
Yeah, it's ninety-nine percent done, we just have to do a final review before we put it out for bid.
So, my concern at that, at this point is that, yes, we're, we're going to have it stabilized, but what is the park itself going to look like? And again, this is something that we need to follow or develop some sort of process because everybody might have different ideas of what kind of amenities we want to have at that park. I know, uh, Jimmy Neal had found a, uh, a grant for something called a fitness court, uh, which, uh, looks like a pretty neat thing. And, uh, you know, the Riverfront Park might be, and Jimmy Neal agrees, is that, uh, is he here?
I don't see him.
Um, he, he, he has agreed that, uh, that would be an ideal, ideal thing to put down there at Riverfront Park, a fitness court. And, uh, like, basically it's a park where you can have different exercise station using your own body weight to do different types of exercises. Uh, be neat to go down there and be able to exercise, I think, and right there on the riverfront. But there's other things that people are going to want to see at Riverfront Park too. So what is the plan for determining what that will look like?
This is using FEMA money to bring it back to where it was before the storm. So it will restore the sidewalks, including the sidewalk along the, the river. It'll put the lighting back in place, you'll have the park benches and you'll have some water fountains. We're putting the dock back in and you'll have some stations there where boats can tie up and plug in on the dock. But anything new as far as an enhancement beyond that would have to be done after the FEMA bank stabilization is complete. They're not going to, they're not really going to fund our enhancements on it past that point. There's nothing in there that will prohibit you from taking it another place where it's just going to put it back basically substantially the way it was.
Right, okay, that, that's fair enough and, uh, of course
I should say this, there will be a railing along the river. Um, before we just had that kind of cable, though, there'll actually be a, a railing with three levels to it, uh, along the river, so.
Great, and, uh, I guess the park enhancement program though would be a potential source of funding for some of these, or something to do at Riverfront, if you wanted to put there.
It could be, and, and, and I will go ahead and mention that, you know, we'll be kicking off our process of refreshing the downtown plan and any enhancements to the park after the, this project's over. Um, you know, could be included in future plans for the park itself.
Yeah, and one of the things that, uh, I put on my wish list, uh, that, uh, I didn't hear was, uh, in, in this, um, you know, this isn't probably the form to talk about this in any detail, but the, uh, at some point, we're going to need to talk about the Battleship Texas and what we're going to need to do to, uh, move forward on that project and I understand that, uh, we're going to be getting a report from Lanier Engineering relatively soon, is, is that correct on that?
Yes, sir, I don't have a date as of yet, I couldn't, uh, clarify that before council, but it'll be in the coming weeks. Uh, probably within the next thirty days, we'll be able to get a report.
And anything that we decide to do on that, if, for instance, if the city of Beaumont were to want to put some funding in the budget, uh, on an amount not to exceed to help pay for any infrastructure, uh, necessary, that would be accomplished through a budget amendment as well?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate because at the present time, our range of what the cost could be are quite wide. Until we clarify, um, that, it would be hard to budget anything.
Okay.
Councilmember Samuel.
Do we have a Battleship, uh, 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 project going?
Council authorized us to get a refined, uh, estimate and, and talk to other agencies through Lanier. It was a twenty thousand dollar project to, to firm up basically the, the previous rough estimate. That's what, that's what the report will be.
Oh, the estimate that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We, I want to make sure it's understood, we're not giving any, uh, false impressions, there are no weeds, we don't want to go through the weeds. Uh, what we're spending for Riverfront Park is to restore the bank and bring the bar, park to its existing boundaries, uh, where it drops off.
Basically stabilize the bank to post-storm boundaries is what we agreed on with FEMA. And then the remainder of the money that they had allocated, we're going to use towards the Colliers Ferry Pump Station.
Okay, but there's nothing in addition to what was already there previously, there's nothing new going to be there in Riverfront Park?
No, it's back substantially.
So if we were to talk about development within Riverfront Park, then that would get to this process where you're talking about having a Parks and Recreation Committee review, receive ideas to be done and Riverfront Park would be a part of that.
Yes, sir, yes.
So right now, we're just talking about getting Riverfront Park back open.
Back open, and I would remind council that that park has flooded twice within the last decade. So anything we do put at Riverfront level, I think we should have an eye on the fact that it will probably go underwater again. So, I mean, if you're putting sidewalk in or something like that, okay, but I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend putting structures, uh, that you don't foresee, you know, getting wiped out by
I just want all those people that might be getting excited about Riverfront Park development to understand the excitement is just to get it back open.
Get it back.
As it, as it was.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, one thing on that?
Councilmember Getz.
In fairness, it, we have the opportunity now because of the railway tracks that have been abandoned to actually expand Riverfront Park's footprint, uh, going west. Uh, we're going to be able to green up that area and incorporate that into Riverfront Park. Uh, is my understanding, is that still on the table?
Yeah, we're still in discussion with the port for a land swap and, and hopefully at a minimum, we'll be able to uh, clear up a lot of that gravel bed left over from the rail yard and whether it becomes, you know, technically part of the park. Uh, I think from the perspective of the public, hopefully you wouldn't be able to tell whether it was in the park or not because it would be green space.
Exactly, and that, that means from an aesthetics point of view, uh, Riverfront Park could be better than ever. Um, you know, with all that greened up and maybe have some, uh, concrete walking trails or, or something like that along it. Uh, you, you know, it's kind of an enhancement to the park.
Councilmember Durya, any questions?
Um, as far as the Riverfront Park, um, how's it going? We just approved a deal for the, the railroad to put a sidewalk across that, uh, down there, across the track?
Yes, sir.
Where, where are we with that?
So, we're still in discussion with both the port and B N S F as to, um, next steps as to how to get that permit approved. Um, but we're hope, hoping to get that because again, in our opinion, if we can establish a pedestrian crossing at grade and fence it off and be able to barricade it properly, it's going to be much safer than just having it, having that rail open for the public to cross anywhere.
One other question, in the budget book that you gave us under Public Works Projects, I think it starts on page two twenty-seven
Okay.
to two twenty-nine. These are all projects, are they funded and going to happen or are these under for consideration?
Both.
Both, if it's under design or construction, that means that, you know, it's funded and we're, we're working, are going to work on it. If it's for consideration, that's not funded.
On these pa, or just start some pages, see what I'm talking about, Chris?
Yeah, so, yeah, so at the end of the capital plan, there's a description, brief description of each project. But that, those descriptions include both those that are under consideration, uh, which may not be funded versus, as well as those that are under design and construction, so they're all in that listing, whether, whether they're in either of those categories.
Okay.
Okay. So at this time, I will ask the clerk if you have, uh, anyone that would like to speak on the public hearing.
You want to go ahead and open it so we can?
Go ahead and open the floor.
Uh, David Haskett seventeen sixty-five, is that Rakesha or Ricochet? How do you pronounce, Ricochet Lane, Beaumont, Texas?
Hi, I know y'all are all tired, you've been here a while and I, I appreciate all y'all do all the time. I know it's supposed to be a part-time job, but y'all put in a whole bunch of hours and I want you to know, I appreciate it. The reason I'm here today, I was looking at the capital plan some and I noticed that the street projects and the water projects are separate in the capital plan, and that's why I'm here talking today. And it seems like what, what I've been watching for twenty or thirty years is, uh, in Old Town, like a one block between Forest Street and Center Street, there are twenty, no, twelve, there are twelve large patches on that one, there's no cross street, twelve large patches in that. And the significance that is, is each one of those patches is where the water line has been repaired. So it's like the street repairs and the water needs, department needs to come together. And, and so that's just a one example of, and so I talked to a crew a few years back that was working on Forest Street right there. When they were doing the same thing, they were patching, fixing water breaks up and down the street and I was down it, down in that area. Uh, and I said, why don't y'all do like industry would do after you replace, have to, uh, repair the pipe so many times, one time, you're in that kind of business, Mr. Deal. Two times, three times, you say, hey, let's stop, let's talk to the head man, we need to replace this whole block or we need to replace this whole two blocks instead of just patching it because it's continually tearing up the street. And he says, it's different piles of money. So that's why I'm down here during the capital hearing to say, we need to get where that the, we're like industry hat. Call, it's, at, where I worked at a plant for forty-three years, it's called root cause analysis. If these old streets in Old Town or the South End stayed tore up all the time, you need to look at it. Is it because you're not putting enough underlay, limestone or stuff? Is it because you have to dig, because the water line is under the street in Old Town? In my neighborhood, it's in my front yard, but you, every time you have to, so what I'm here begging you and I thought I would be saying when Mr. Getz proposed that one cent, that we didn't go down to say, list up the amount of
Go ahead and finish your statement.
Okay, list up the amount that we're spending on streets and water lines and gets their, I mean, they have one director, so it shouldn't be that hard to get their head together where they're coordinating antiquated water line replacements and then overlay. And the, the point of this is, is the other place in the budget was they're going to spend, it says right there, they're going to spend three point five million dollars to put asphalt on Gladys from Edson to Interstate ten. They're going to ask, it's over three million dollars on a, on a concrete curved and ga, uh, guttered street because nobody was there, seemingly nobody was there, that had the catch basins put in because they're having asphalted because everywhere there's a catch basin, it's a deep pothole and y'all know that if y'all go down Gladys any. So what we need is, we need, we need our city engineers to watch new construction closer. And we need, I'm asking and begging y'all to coordinate the antiquated pipe replacement and replace more. And I sent y'all each a, each email, but I just sent it last night, so I, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. But a perfect example, we talked a lot about numbers that was really mind boggling. But from what I'm seeing, the street of Hazel, the, a street of Hazel, Harrison and Long between Magnolia and M L K is in horrible, they're in horrible shape. And so it's hard to understand why we can't spend that extra penny that Mr. Getz proposed that we don't go down on the tax rate on that, it's what I'm begging for you to do.
Thank you.
Jason, and I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name, Jason, it's fifty-eight eighty-five Pink Staff Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, so my name is Jason Apodaca and I am representing the United Way of North and Jefferson, but North Beaumont and Jefferson County. So United Way is an organization that is, is captured by providing opportunity for organizations to partner, partner organizations where we go on a fund, a campaign fundraiser and we raise the money and then we allocate those dollars to organizations that go through a stringent, um, um, uh, process for pre-qualification, okay? So those organizations are folks like the Boys and Girls Club, uh, Boy Scouts of America, Rape and Suicide Crisis Southeast, Southeast Texas, the Shorkey Center, the Southeast Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, uh, Boys Haven, Southeast Texas Food Bank, Nutrition for Seniors. Um, so, so why is, why is the United Way important? Why is it important to me? Why do I believe in the Why do I believe in the United Way? The United Way is the only philanthropic organization that will touch everybody in this room at some point in their life, and how are we going to do that? We're going to touch through your families, we're going to touch through your brother, your sister, your mother, your son, your children. At some point, someone in your family, the United Way will reach, will have something to do with your, your family's life. So, it's, it's a philanthropic organization that we believe in and, and we think it's, it's an opportunity for our cities to rally behind. So, so why are we here? So, we're talking about this American Rescue Fund Plan. Our, our ask is great. Your need in your city is great. Okay? So, so what does this, what does this fund do? This fund has allotment of two, two, a fiscal year of 2022, a fiscal year of 2023, 16 million plus. In the first, in the first allotment, it was, it was regulated that nonprofit couldn't go after those funds. In the second batch of the other, of the 16 million, it, it was re-regulated and it allows nonprofit to go after those funds. So, so it's, this isn't necessarily a page turn, but this is where we got the data from to support the conversation today, the, the pamphlet that you guys have. So, what are we asking for? The United Way is asking that you guys, Chris, you do a recommendation, you have advisement in favor of this, mayor, city council members, you guys allow us, give us, give us this in favor of, of $2 million, and how do we do that? So, this $2 million is going to be allocated through, through funds appropriation, and we will continue to do the, the due diligence, the work that the United Way is continuously doing today. We have the most stringent process of pre-qualifying people and, and ensuring that what they do, what those organizations are doing with their dollars, they're doing the right thing. When, when an organization reaches out to another, another, another request on grant writing, different areas in which they're asking for money, they put the United Way bug on their, on their, on their pamphlet, and they say, we are approved organization by the United Way because we have the most stringent process of making sure that those folks are doing the right thing with the money and that they're appropriating those funds correctly. So, I, I wanted to support this conversation with data. Our need is great in this city, in Jefferson County. We, we got the debt, the, the, the information from 211. And so, from March of 23 of 2020 to March 29, 2022, there were 4,396,913 calls made to 211. Now, I'm not going to go through every one of the analytics, but.
No, because your time is up. And we have the form. We're all quite aware of the United Way. I was a United Way coordinator for AT&amp;T for many, many years, and I think most of us up here are quite familiar with United Way.
Now, the last guy here, you gave him extended time, and I'm asking you to give me just another two minutes.
Well, and we have your data. And we do have your data. So, we're going to look at it because it's already part of what we are looking at in a form, so we're quite aware of it. And I thank you. And again, we're going to look at it and, and we will consider it.
Thank you, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Charles Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay, my name's Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, and I want to say, mayor, council, and staff, thank you for your service. And I've been listening to the budget, and that kind of overwhelmed me. I thought I had something to, to say, but I guess one thing I'd like to, to see, different costs in the city, like trash pickup, where we're picking up limbs and trees now. And I think the city should charge the, the landowner for picking up the trees because of big logs and things. And I think the, to get a tree cut down, you're, you're talking about $1,000 or more. So, they should pay to have it moved, moved to the, to the recycle area. Okay, now, this may have already been addressed about the pine street pipe. I guess my question is, why isn't it laid in the old intake canal from the river to the water plant? Let me see what else I might have here. Okay, I guess the budget I'd like to see kept at 20, 22 amounts and just increased according to inflation because we're looking, to listen to the news, we're looking at a, a recession next year, and it'll be difficult for the citizens of Beaumont to pay increased taxes. Let's see, and the water bill, I'd like to see the water bill to reflect the actual cost of water and sewer. And then if we need to add an item on there for other things, for city expenses, add it on, like I think we have an item on there for streets. And, and of course, the water bill is collected monthly, so that does bring in extra money to the city. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. So, we're going to close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, there's someone in the back. He turned in a form. Your name, sir?
Gregory Adams.
You weren't talking on the budget, though?
No.
This was about the budget. No problem, no problem. Okay, so we're gonna, I'm gonna close the floor for the public hearing. Everyone has spoken, and we're gonna go to item number one. Will you please read item number one?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, we've just held a joint public hearing on the proposed FY 2023 budget and the proposed FY 2023 capital program. We're now asking you to approve a resolution to postpone the final vote on the proposed FY 2023 budget until September 13, 2022. The proposed FY 2023 budget was submitted to council on August 9, 2022, and a work session was held on August 16. The proposed 2023 capital program was originally submitted on May 10, 2022, and again with the proposed budget on August 9, 2022. The notice of the public hearings on the budget and capital program are published on August 20, 2022. Local Government Code Section 102.007 states that at the conclusion of the public hearing, the governing, governing body of the municipality shall take action on the proposed budget. Council should take action to postpone the final vote on the proposed budget until September 13, 2022. The administration recommends approval of this resolution.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Have a, have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. So, I know there's a lot of discussion today about the water rates. So, I need to, I need to basically get a consensus from council because there's been so much discussion on this. You will be asked to approve the budget on September 13. On that same day, you'll be asked to approve a property tax rate, a water rate increase, and a solid waste rate increase. So, I need to make sure what we present to you on September 13 is what y'all are going to vote on. So, I don't know if we have a consensus to keep the water rate at six, the water rate at 6% increase, the property tax rate at 69.5, and the solid waste going up $1.25. And again, we can't change anything unless y'all say something today because then we have to publish a notice per charter to make any changes, at least adding expenses to the budget. You can, you can do things to the revenue because we don't appropriate revenue, but if you're going to change any expenses, meaning adding expenses, it needs to be stated today so that I can publish a notice in the paper and we have to have another public hearing. But if you're fine with the expenses, we can move forward. I just need to know if there's consensus on moving forward with the budget as presented or if y'all want to change any of the revenues.
Oh, councilmember Neal, then councilmember Felschau.
So, just to clarify for me, right now it's at 69.5%. The original budget you gave us is at 68.5%. On the 13th, when we vote for this, we can still reduce it back down to 68.5, correct?
You can. We haven't done any changes the day we approved the rates, the same day that we approved the budget. We could do it on that day. It's just that it's going to take us more time to update the budget, get it posted online for the citizens to see. So, that, that's why we normally try to go into the day you're approving the budget with a final document, so that, just being transparent with the citizens and it gets posted to the website immediately.
So, at this point today, do we need to, do we need to pull the motion to add?
No, ma'am, there's, there's, there's no action to take.
Oh, okay.
Normally, we just try to get a feel of council. If they like the budget that's proposed, if not, in other words, if y'all are going to increase any expenses, we have to follow the charter, publish another notice, have another public hearing.
Or leave it as is, as it's presented today. Councilmember Felschau, then councilmember Gatz, and councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, mayor. You know, Todd, we're seven people trying to wrap our mind around a $300 million year budget. I don't have a degree in finance. You do. The staff has a job to come to us with recommendations, and then we, to the best of our ability, support you in that and we move forward. There's been a lot of talk today about 6%, 8%. All we can ask of you is to cut expenses to the best of your ability and then make recommendations to us about revenue or income. And I feel like sometimes as a council, when we get deep into the weeds, that's when we end up getting in trouble. I'm assuming the process that we've used for years has been somewhat productive and simple. You do the best job you can, you make the recommendation, and we look at it, trying to comprehend it the best we can and wrap our minds around it, and then we vote. But, you know, I, I feel today that there's been just a lot of discussion about 8%, 6%. Again, you're trying to counsel us to be careful. You, you want 8% on the rate increase, but you gave us 6% because you feel like we wouldn't swallow the 8, correct?
I was asked to see what I could do to lower the rate, so that's when I updated the revenue projections with July numbers on water revenue. I'm not just tweaking numbers, I want you to understand, I'm not just tweaking numbers, but the July revenues did come in higher than we anticipated. So, we were able to afford a lower rate increase to get to the same minimum fund balance requirement, but my concerns are with the bond ratings. I don't think we're going to hold our rating at the, at what's proposed right now.
So, the bottom line is, as citizens, our tax dollars, we're going to spend that money one way or the other. Our problem is, is that our constituents see that 6% or 8% on their bill. They see that, that's tangible, and that's where we start getting phone calls. But if, if, if they, if there is a, a reduction in our rate, I mean, our, I'm sorry.
Our credit rating.
Our credit rating, yes. And we spend out more money, interest, we spend out more. They're never going to see that, are they?
Well, they will in the future.
Well, but unless they're going to follow that budget, pay attention to it, the average citizen's never going to see that.
It, well, it will lead to a rate increase. You have, you have to cover your extra debt payments somehow.
But my point is, is where we get trouble.
Right.
It's, you know, or our concern, trouble is wrong, is that, that bill they get every month. And that's why we struggle with it because, but at the end of the day, these monies are going to go out one way or the other, correct?
Right. Well, if it pleases council, what we can do is if there's no increases of expenditures, what we can do is we can come to council on September, September 13 with our proposed tax rate, water rate increase, solid weight rate increase, and y'all can either accept them or change them at that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
What I'd like to know right now is, on the proposed tax rate and the water rate and the trash and sewer rate, initially, the recommendation from staff, what it came back today, and then, well, no, what you all adjusted it to, and your feelings today. I need to know those three things about those three items. The proposed tax rate, the water rate, the trash rate, the first recommendation from staff, then after discussions, the, what you came back with and today.
Okay, on the property tax rate, we recommended 68 and a half cents. That's a two-cent drop from the current rate. And then council advised to put in 69 and a half cents. On the water rate increase, we proposed an 8% increase. Was asked to, to do something to see if we could lower that rate increase, so we lowered it to 6% based off of new water revenue projections. For solid waste, it's a flat dollar amount. We were going to increase the rates by $1.20. Do you have that slide, $1.25 or was it $1.50?
$1.25.
Down to 25.
Okay, and we didn't get any resistance on that.
Okay. And at the, at what rate did you feel is going to impact the bond rating? That was the 6%?
Well, I think either way we worked it before, when we had 8%, we had a lower revenue projection until we got better numbers. So, honestly, I think either way, they're going to look at FY 21 metrics. And so, I don't know how that, how well that's going to play out as far as their rating. You know, both of our, both of those metrics went down, like we showed you in the slideshow. But what they're going to ask me is, what are you doing to correct this? That's what, whatever we do this year is going to be my answer to them on how to correct it.
That's where we said we would take some of the cuts, correct? The million dollars.
Well, that's where they're going to say, well, what kind of rate increase did you propose for FY 23? I'll have to tell them. They're going to say, what other plans do you have? I can tell them, you know, we're looking at ordinance changes for multi-unit, you know, apartments, the credit card fees. You know, I can tell them our plans, but 80% of their, their grade on, on the rating are just those two metrics alone.
Mr. Ben?
Mayor, correction. The proposed increase to the garbage rate was $1.50, not 1.25.
And this is on garbage?
Garbage, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're at $1.50 garbage. Six.
Yeah, the current budget has a 6% increase for water rates.
For water.
And the property tax rate of 69.5. And we can come to council with those three agenda memos ready for you to vote on, and you can either approve it or change it at that time. But just wanted to make sure, we can't add any more expenses unless you do it today.
Okay. Is everyone okay?
So, Todd.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Gatz and Neil.
So, Todd, first of all, thank you because you listened to the concerns of council and you reacted in such a way to try to address them, and you've explained them well. That is, that's commendable. What we have before us today is you're addressing those concerns. What I would like to know is, though, with regard to your projections on how our water rates might affect our bonds. That's a projection, and I understand you, you know, you're good at your job and you know what you're doing. If they do lower our bonds, that will have an impact on how much we decide to borrow, would it not?
No, sir, it wouldn't necessarily impact on the amount we can borrow. It impacts the interest rate we pay back.
I, I get that, but the interest rate is a component of how much we borrow.
Correct.
So, you know, if, if by some miraculous event, they leave our bond rating alone and they say, okay, y'all are looking at increasing your out-of-town customer rates, you're looking at changing the ordinance so that your apartment owners are going to be paying more, and they, and they leave it alone, you know, we're good, right?
Well, like I said, two, two of the metrics that I showed you are 80% of their grade. Another percent of their grade is water loss. We experienced a lot of water loss because we're doing so much flushing because of the freeze adjustments, things like that. So, they do look at water. So, they do look at water loss, then everything else is pretty much subjective. It's economic outlook. So, yeah, the things we're talking about, what we can do in the future, they might be weighted ten percent towards our credit rating.
When we open hydrants to flush our lines, do we calculate that water loss as part of our, we don't calculate that, do we? We do?
Yes.
How do you calculate?
One moment.
Do we?
It's, it's not metered, though. So, when, when Todd's talking about water loss, he's looking at what's pumped out of the plant and then what we build. And what, what we didn't build is considered water loss, though you do factor in some routine flushing and there's a factor on that. But, but we do not, when we open hydrants, we do not meter them.
Okay, I know, but sometimes we open hydrants and we forget we've opened them for a long time. So, that's water loss that now I'm understanding, I guess realizing for the first time, that that actually can have an effect on our bond rating. So.
We're, we're having to aggressively flush right now, so I, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't say that any of them are left open and forgotten about. We're, we're having to aggressively flush, especially in the late summer months because of nitrification issues to keep the chlorine residual up. So, sometimes that may be a week that a hydrant's open, if that is possible.
Okay, just, thank you for what you've done. I'm good with what you've done and I'm, I'm okay with the sixty-eight and a half and the six percent. That's where I'm at. I'm sorry, the sixty-nine and a half and the six percent.
Councilmember Turner.
So, Todd, just to make sure I'm following you correctly and I'm clear. You projected the eight percent, but if we agree to six percent, you come back next week. It can't go back to the eight percent you projected, correct?
No, we can adjust revenues without the requirement of another public hearing. We just can't adjust appropriations which are expenditures.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I followed you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Neal.
I still prefer the sixty-eight point five versus the sixty-nine point five, back to your original recommendation. What's, what were we planning on doing with that additional million dollars, other than decreasing the laws for the fund balance?
Well, you gotta remember, so, we're in negotiations with the police department right now. We have a certain amount budgeted for their increase. It could be more than that. That extra one percent will just help us going further into fund balance. So, like I said, we're the ones who, you know, proposed the sixty-eight and a half cents. Y'all came back with the sixty-nine and a half, half cents.
And then at the police, we have.
But I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair for us to say that it's a tax reduction.
Well, that's correct. I mean, we're reducing our tax rate, but we have no control over appraised values. So, it's a combination of the two multiplied together. So, some people, depending on their appraised values, if their appraised value held or went down, it is a tax reduction. But for the majority, it's gonna be a tax increase.
But not on the part of the city?
Correct. We have nothing to do, yeah, we don't control property values.
Well, it is on the, on the part of the city, because we'll end up.
Not their appraised value.
Producing more revenue at, at a lower rate. So, it's still a tax increase.
That's correct.
Councilmember Samuel, then councilmember Gitz.
I just wanna make sure I understood, 'cause it sounded a little bit different. What we, what you're trying to get a feel of is what to present on the thirteenth.
Yes, sir, and I think I'm to the point now. I think y'all may be undecided. We're just gonna come to council with agenda memos.
No, 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 not yet.
Okay.
I just want, 'cause as I understood it, you all, you proposed sixty-eight point five, sixty-eight and a half initially.
Right.
And we went to sixty-nine and a half because we were told you can always go down, but you can't go up. And that's why that was increased. And is that the same thing with the eight percent versus the six percent?
So, the property tax rate's governed by state law.
Okay.
Well, we're talking about, when we're talking about our water rate increase and solid weight, solid waste rate increase, those are governed by the charter and our ordinances. We can change those at any time.
Okay, so, okay, because you proposed initially eight percent.
Correct.
And a dollar fifty. So, that's, okay, okay, I understand. One was statutory.
Correct.
And the other two are not.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, councilmember Gitz.
And just to reiterate, the change from the six percent, from the eight percent to the six percent was in some part offset because you found, after looking at the July production, that, that there was more water being used than, than previous, previously you thought. So, the revenues were gonna be about the same, so you could get to the same ending place because more revenue was created because more water was used. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Now's the time for public comment. If any citizen would like to speak, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name, and your three minutes will begin when the green light comes on. And the red light is your indication that your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Gregory Adams, thirty-five ninety-eight Abbey Lane, Beaumont, Texas. He left. David Pete, sixty-three fifty-five Chin Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I wasn't even gonna be here today, but watching you all on camera today, and I heard some things being spoken of about the proposals and the budget and different things. And one of the things was mentioned on your proposals was about the dog park, or whatever it is, in the West End, and how you're allowing someone to put that on the agenda, to propose a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar dog park versus what this city really needs, a community center for the kids, and we don't have that, no one spoke about that. I believe Mr. AJ did mention about something pertaining to the kids, but nothing was presented on the proposal. And so, we're here talking about an agenda and talking about the proposal and the budget and everything, and trying to figure out exactly how we're gonna pay for these things. And so, what you have here is a, is a, is a, is a host of, of proposals that's on a fiscal budget that was put out last year, and it has a list of all these different projects. And everybody's trying to figure out who's get funded. And so, now we have an issue of what gets funded versus what doesn't get funded. But we've been doing the same thing here for the last five to ten years, doing the same thing on the drainage. We've been talking about drainage for years, and still, there's nothing being done about the drainage. Every time you talk about the drainage, it's about a percentage on how much you're gonna increase people's water. But what about the maintenance on the drainage? What about the maintenance on the pipes and things that are going unnoticed and going undelved? Those are the issues you need to be dealing about. How are these things being maintained? How are they being actually carried out? Or is there any inspection goes on to make sure that those pipes and drainages are in operable condition? Do we have that? That's never been presented, as, as far as I know, that's been presented before this council or by the men and women who are, you know, tasked with these, with these duties. So, when we're talking about that, you guys need to consider the things that are most important in this city. I've been here all my life. I'm fifty-seven years old. I've been here all my life. And I, I've never seen such activities like this, and then, and allowing people to do what they do. But one other thing I wanna mention as well, I know you all had assembled a community advisement board, or whatever it is, that allows you to, them to vote on or to give you some kind of recommendations on certain projects. And my, my request on that is, that needs to be dismantled, because it disenfranchises, because the individuals are on there, are playing, playing the wrong cards, because they are, they're petitioning for certain ones on this board, and they present certain things to them. So, it needs to be dismantled. So, consider all of those things, because that's not gonna work. Thank you.
Charles Crabbe, nine twenty-eight East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, councils again. I guess I fail to thank Chris for his service during this transition period. The dog park, we ought to have the, the proponents of the dog park increase, I mean, raise the money for it. That, that would be great. And anyway, thank you for all your service, and I'm gonna go home.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Y'all have a nice evening.
Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five Gross Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and interim City Manager. I'm standing here, haven't been here a while, and I listen to what's going on, and I know that it's been a long time with this budget. But, like the gentleman talked about, the maintenance, there was ditching out in Amelia. And I don't know if it was considered elevations. I have algae now in my ditch, and the water does not move. I've talked to the Water Department about that. So, you can dig all the ditches you want, but I'd like to see somebody address, once you dig the ditches, we've had a lot of rain, it's standing, it's creating mosquitoes. The airport, which you know is my thing, there was a contract that was given for spraying the mosquitoes. So, now, we're looking at mosquito city out in Amelia. The other thing is, there's grass ordinances. The stop signs on Todd and other streets now have grass going up to the stop sign. So, the weeds can't read stop. They, they're going. One of the city councilmen asked about weeds at the tracks. There is so much stuff. We need to look at it. You got code enforcement, they ride through. Do they see? We've got children going to Amelia School, and you've got all of this grass. You've got train tracks, you've got the trains that are sitting at the tracks behind weeds. There could be some unsafe stuff that jumps out at them when they're walking on the sidewalks that are like a railroad, like a mountain railroad. So, sidewalks, the children are walking from Amelia in the street. Maybe it's for BISD, maybe it's for the city, I don't know. But then, when I looked at comparisons with the water rate, 'cause I gotta move with this three minutes, all the red, I was told, or we were told, was construction for the subdivisions. Why is the city not keeping up with the changing of the maintenance of the pipes? Every time it rains, I've been up here before, the water backs up in my bathtub. The city's been out. You know, it's consistent. Now, the water level is low. I'd love to see that the city of Beaumont has superior water again. We're talking about raising the rates, but what about the maintenance, you know? We've got people that are on limited incomes, and you're talking about raising the rates? I looked at a bill at two, in two thousand, was twenty-two dollars. My bill that I got yesterday was sixty-eight. I can pay it, but let's look at some of those things, if you can follow my randomness. Have a good day and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor. Oh, did you? I'm sorry. Mr. Haskett? No, you just checked the public hearing. Yeah, but I can call you again, it's okay. David Haskett, seventeen twenty-five Riquetche Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
I, I know it's late, but I've, like y'all, I've sat here three and a half hours, and I can't tell if we approved the tax rate of sixty-eight five or sixty-nine five. And I can't.
Sixty-nine five.
Sixty-nine five. And so, the question is, what did we get for that one penny difference in what y'all were talking? I know we said the water rates were up in July, but when Mr. Boone, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but when I was sitting there watching, I thought we had less of a deficit in the water fund, because that's where part of that penny was going when you said minus three-hundred-and-twenty thousand instead of higher when it was last week, or last time. So, was part of that money going down, that in the deficit for the water fund for that penny? Or was it all because of what Mr. Semino said for the, so I'm confused. And if I'm confused, I'm sure there's a number of other people that are confused, 'cause I've been sitting here three and a half hours.
Someone can speak to you afterwards to explain that to you.
So, you're saying, you're saying none of the penny, the sixty-nine point five, the one, none of the penny is going to the deficit? Where, where, my question is, where's that penny going in the budget?
I'll be happy to discuss it with Mr. Haskett after, yeah.
He'll discuss it with you afterwards, Mr. Haskett.
Thank y'all for letting me talk twice. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mayor, can you please clarify that we did not vote on a tax rate today?
True. We did not vote on a tax rate today. Thank you. Proposed. Thank you. Okay, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Now's the time for councilmember comment, and I will start with Mayor Protim Duria.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna extend my condolences to the Neal family on the loss of Councilman Neal, Uncle Former Mayor Bill Neal. If you could pass that on to the family for me. Also, I wanna thank, Mike Harris came out to the Pearl Archer Neighborhood Association meeting, and he gave a great presentation. Spoke to him. He explained to them about flushing. He explained to them about how they go down with cameras and inspect the pipes periodically and the maintenance on all the pipes and everything. He done an outstanding job. Only problem, we had to ask him to shut down, 'cause he was talking too long. But he did do a good job, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Gitz.
Ditto, Taylor, on the loss of your Uncle Bill, former mayor of the city of Beaumont. And, you know, we, we share in mourning his loss with your family. Last fiscal year, there was something in the capital plan about dog parks, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That was for three dog parks, not one. The projected cost of one dog park is about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. And it'd probably actually be less than that. So, to correct the misinformation that was provided earlier, one single dog park's not going to cost four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, the work that's been done here today was, I think, taken seriously by all. It's a lot of work, and appreciate all the efforts of Mr. Semino and your staff in getting this information to us. I know, and Mr. Boone, y'all have both had a lot of stuff coming at you. You know, councilmembers are taking their job seriously, been asking these questions, because these are big decisions that we all have to make, and we're trying to do the best job we can for our city and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gitz. Councilmember Turner.
Chris Boone, your last meeting is in tomorrow. I wanna say thank you for everything you done. Thank you for the experience. Looking forward to working with you more in the future, and I appreciate it. Todd, I wanna say you, thank you as well, because you've took several phone calls to explain things. And like I stated, it's my first time going through this budget, so I have a lot of questions. 'Cause when citizens ask me questions, I like to be able to give them accurate information. So, thank you for taking the time out to explain everything, even sitting down with me one-on-one multiple times and helping me get a better understanding of it. I wanted to say I appreciate you. And everybody who came out, we appreciate you guys. Thank you for coming out. It's not easy sitting through a meeting, three and a half hours, but we appreciate y'all coming out and speaking. It means a lot.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschall.
Thank you, Mayor. As has been said, condolences to the Neal family. My only regret is, after reading about Bill, that I never had the opportunity to know him. It's obvious he was a great man in Beaumont. He sounds like the kinda guy that we all would like to know. But prayers to the Neal family. Also, again, Todd. Also, again, Todd, thank you for your work and Chris, thank you for the job you've done in holding that seat. There's a lot that should be said, there's a lot that could be said, but all I can do is say well done and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to extend my condolences to you and your family. Mayor Neal was the first mayor that I worked with, so I have a great deal of respect for him. I learned a lot from him, so my condolences. I want to thank you, Chris, for the job that you've done in the interim, but I thank you for your service to the city. And I appreciate you and your staff and all of the staff that I know a lot of hours, a lot of time is spent in preparing the budget and I sincerely appreciate it and you staying ready to answer questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys for the condolences for Uncle Bill. He was indeed a fine man that loved this city with everything he had, spent over sixty years giving back to this community. The, also like to say thank you, Chris, for the job you did. I can't think of a better man for the job during the interim. I think you did a fine job and Beaumont is indebted to you for the job you did. Kind of echo what everybody said, Todd, Semino, about the job you guys have done on the budget. You now still struggle with the sixty-eight and a half versus the sixty-nine and a half as we discussed multiple times on the phone, but we will get through this in the next couple of weeks, but I appreciate the job your department did.
Thank you. Attorney Shereen Reed.
Just want to echo the sentiments of council, my gratitude to Chris during this transition and also the condolences to Councilman Neal.
Thank you. Bart?
I'll echo Shereen. Chris, thank you for holding, holding the seat while, you know, we're waiting. Thanks.
Todd.
I was hoping to be done, but I can't take the credit for all the budget. I have a great staff. Cheryl Ray's here, Stephanie Hardy, well Cheryl just left. But Cheryl Ray and Stephanie Hardy, they, they put in a lot of hours and I just got a great staff upstairs and just want to thank them. Thanks.
And Tina.
Just want to give condolences to Councilmember Neal and his family on the loss of his uncle and to thank Chris Boone for an outstanding job as interim city manager. Appreciate everything you've done.
Okay, and Mr. Chris Boone.
Ma'am, Mayor, just condolences to the Neal family. I read the Neal family motto in the paper the other day and I, I found it to be very wise words, so just condolences to you and your family. Just like to echo, I think, what was said here about all the hard work that Todd and his staff has done to put, help put this budget together. Again, a lot of long, long hours doing that and, and, you know, just extend my appreciation to especially all the department directors who helped me through the interim period and of course, all the, the staff that makes everything happen. I obviously could not have done it without them and I appreciate the, the mayor and the council's support through the interim period and I thank y'all for the opportunity.
Thank you. So I would like to say, on behalf of myself, this entire council and the city of Beaumont, Taylor, please give the condolences to your family. Mr. Neal was mayor from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-six of this city. Funeral services will be held on tomorrow.
No, ma'am, next, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? Okay, I thought of next Wednesday. Also to you, Chris, you took over April first and we're so grateful for the job that you did. Thank you for your service and your commitment to the city. We appreciate everything that you've done while being interim man in the ship. The city never missed a beat and we thank you for the work that you put in and for your dedication. Also, please don't forget Julie Rogers' gift of life, men's PSA screening. I know that's not a fun word to hear, PSA, but of course, we're asking everyone to please man up and show up and early detection is the best way to conquer any cancer. And so September tenth and September seventeenth, September tenth in Beaumont will be at the Industrial Safety Training Center and on the seventeenth of September, they will be at Orange Baptist Hospital outpatient lobby. And we're so grateful to have such a service in our city. Even with the insurance, when you go to the doctor, you're still going to pay your copay, so it's not even free when you have insurance. So to say that this service is offered and you can just walk in without paying a dime to save your life, we're very fortunate in this area to have such a person like Regina Rogers that has dedicated her life to this community and saving so many lives. So we're so grateful for the gift of life. Also, I would like to thank Mayor Protem Durio on last week. I was out of town, I was in Austin, Texas. In twenty nineteen, I chaired the Policy Committee, which is the Texas Municipal League Policy Committee, and it is legislative policies that will go into effect in twenty twenty-three. And on last week, I was asked to be a delegate, again, to vote on policies that will be in effect for the upcoming legislative season for twenty twenty-three. It's a great opportunity. There were other mayors, other different, other people in different departments that were invited across the state of Texas. Every municipality across the state of Texas was represented there and it was some long days, but it was storming in Austin, so we were in, in a conference room from eight to five and it took every bit of eight to five for us to get all of that done. And I'm just so grateful that Mayor Protem was able to step up and sit in my seat and handle business as usual. So thank you so very much. From time to time, council members are invited to different sessions. I've even expressed that a couple of weeks ago, I left, I left out on a Sunday evening, came back on a Monday because I was invited by CWA. Just flew over to Scottsdale, Arizona and there's so many conferences that go on across the United States. For the first time, I was invited, well, I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors and that was my first mayor's conference and also the African-American Conference of Mayors. So there's so many conferences that are available for, for learning, that we get ideals, we get to sit and talk to different mayors, different city officials across the state and across the United States. And so some of the things that have happened in this city have come about because of those conferences. And so I'm just so grateful to be able to attend those conferences and bring back to the city some wonderful ideals that we can move our city forward. So with all of that said, I would just like to say, on behalf again of this council, thank you for coming out, thank you for sitting through. This has been a long meeting, but budget has not been fun. I think you've seen these binders and they're pretty thick. My husband is quite familiar with it because he's seen it. It's gone from my kitchen table to my bedroom to my living room on my patio with coffee. So we don't take this lightly and this is time that we spend on our personal time taking care of this. So to Todd and his staff, if we did it in the time that we did it, you've been working on it a whole lot longer than we have and it's not easy. And I want to thank you and your staff for all of the hard work that you've put into it. Because just me looking through it, through it, you sitting along with us just to explain some of the things that you've had to explain to us with highlights and pages folded and going back and forth and spreading it out on the table. So please know that it has been a lot of time that has been put into it. And whenever there's something that's put in the capital to, to fund, the capital fund, there are some things that have been in the capital fund for ten years. Just because it's there doesn't mean that it's going to be funded or it's going to happen. And so they're just projections and as Mrs. Semino said, not until the, the numbers came in for July, that he could really actually look at those numbers and make a good projection of where we're headed and where we need to be. And so again, thank you for all of the hard work. And again, we're going to recess. Our meeting is not over because now we have executive session, so we're going to recess to executive session. Again, thank you for coming out and spread the love. Bye-bye.